Okay, we are streaming. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 12 Town Council Budget Workshop. Before we get started, if you could please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, and I would ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence for our recently departed loved ones, as well as those who are continue to be affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So we will begin with public comment. This portion of the meeting is specifically set aside for comments from the public, who are asked to limit their comments to two minutes. Any person interested in providing public comment should email publicmeetings@rockyhillsct.gov. You will be provided with a link to attend the Zoom remote meeting and instructions on how you will participate. And I see that we have no request for public comment this evening set up in the queue, so we will move right into the Budget Workshop. Budget Review Discussion Possible Action Subsection A Resolution Proposed Budget Cuts to Town Departments Budgets. So you have that in your meeting packet. And I'm going to let Town Manager John Mayer go over that.
After the council reviewed the budget, the proposed budget or the red book, a request came back to see if the departments could reduce their budgets by an additional 2%. Instead of going through in the old days, line by line, department by department, the council, I believe, asked the department heads to find areas that they believe they can get by next year with less money. So attached to the agenda is a page full of cuts by departments that total up to just under 637,000, equivalent to probably a little bit more than 2%. I guess we're proposing these cuts and under a resolution so that if the town council agrees with them, we could just adopt the resolution as is, as cuts to those various department budgets and budget lines. I guess it's open right now for any questions from the council to the various department heads that are in attendance on this Zoom meeting at this point in time.
I think just to keep it easy, we should probably go off the departments in the manner that they're listed on the agenda so we don't lose track. Does that make sense that we would start with Police Department? And for purposes of following along in our books, I believe we'd be starting on page 38. So at this point, we will open it up for questions or comments from the council of the Police Department.
Where are you seeing that the Police Department comes first?
I'm just looking at the agenda, the way the agenda is written under Budget Review.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
I guess in looking at the proposed cuts, if I were to characterize them, it looks like we were based on what we're seeing probably with some reduced activity in town, it looks like some of the increases that were proposed in the new budget versus last year were basically held flat and removed, like looking, for example, the overtime numbers. And then it also looks like we might be losing a full-time position, so I guess could the chief speak to what we're looking at with, I guess what's critical in the new budget, and then also what we're looking at with the cuts that were proposed?
Sure, no problem. Good evening, everyone. First of all, can you hear me with my mask on?
Yes.
Okay, so the reason why we're in the mask is we're in tight quarters here tonight. I have my two dependents with me who help me with the budget, so obviously they're here for any detailed questions if necessary. But more importantly, I also had an eye exam two hours ago. My eyes were dilated and they still are, and I'm having a hard time seeing numbers, so they're gonna help me do that as well. But in responding to the question, yes, essentially with the 2% cuts that we made, or proposed, I should say, this budget is essentially flat and is the same as what we submitted last year. You know, the biggest increase in this year's proposed budget was the addition of one patrol officer. We've talked about that on numerous occasions, and you know, it's been a goal of ours to try to bump up the number of personnel and patrol specifically. We have added officers, but they weren't assigned to patrol specifically. So it was our hopes that we could at least start this year with the addition of one additional officer. Other than that, you know, the overtime increases were just in keeping with contractual reupon pay raises, and other than that, it was basically a pretty flat budget.
And I guess getting back to the question about the patrol officer, it's my understanding we've had a few folks transfer out of the department. So would that position, are those positions in the process of being filled? And I guess we'd be looking at with that other position that was originally in there, that would have been a net new position? Is that correct?
That is correct. So we were requesting an increase by one from what we have right now. And as far as the vacancies that have occurred, yes, we are in the process of filling those.
The last question I have is if we are under the assumption, and I don't want to you know, jump the gun, but if the accreditation that you've been working towards for many years goes through, does that open us up any pools of grant funding or anything else that would potentially, you know, come our way to help benefit the department, other than, you know, the other things that accreditation stands for?
It shouldn't, no. I don't see that happening.
No more questions from you.
Chief. Quick question. Call count, is that back, is that, are numbers picking up on call count? It's been pretty quiet.
Yeah, it has been increasing, and you know, we're not back to the level we were when we started this, you know, stay at home back in March. But we've noticed an increase in calls for service the last two weeks. So, you know, it's our anticipation. As more and more people start filtering back to work, you know, we're gonna have heavier volume of motor vehicle related calls. And, you know, as the stores open up, you know, the shopliftings, you know, those usual calls that we get, we're all gonna start trickling in again. So, I mean, we maintained our staffing throughout. It was quiet for, I would say, the first three weeks or so, but yeah, we're seeing a trend now where it's getting back to where it was slowly, but each week we see the increase.
Ed, are you all set? I had a question.
Yep.
On the SRO, is there gonna be replacement for the retirement that's coming up?
Yes, there will be, John, and we're gonna be handling that with an in-house officer. So we're not requesting an additional SRO. We'll handle that vacancy with someone presently in the department. But that request for one additional officer would have been specifically for an officer in patrol.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Chief, I got two questions for you, if I may. One of the items, and this may be a common question tonight, in your budget on page 38 is conference expenses. And I'm not really questioning the expense, but in the light of the COVID-19 epidemic, do you anticipate conferences still taking place? Or will they potentially take place remotely?
The conferences that we had scheduled from March on have all been canceled. And we've actually had some engagements right through to June, and they have also just been recently canceled. So again, it's kind of an unknown, and what, you know, what we're heading into next fall and beyond. I would suspect that for at least the first half of the fiscal year, either those engagements will be canceled or they could be handled remotely online. You know, we're anticipating at some point things are gonna open up, so maybe by January, things are back to normal. I don't know, it's hard to say. Thus, we wanted to have some funding there so we would be able to attend those events.
Yeah, that understood. I'm just curious if, you know, what the thought process is going forward. I think it's an unknown for all of us. The second question I had, and it seems like each year I understand more and more of the budget process. I don't know if that's good or bad. But under the Police Support Services, the overtime budget is for weekend and after-call hours. So I guess my understanding is that investigative services or support services is primarily a single-shift operation, except when needed?
Exactly. So basically, that line covers any, well, first of all, if an officer is working and he's held over or she's held over beyond their normal shift because of an investigation, any overtime incurred would come out of that line. If they come in after hours at night, frequently they get calls, one or two o'clock, they come in. Again, overtime situation, that line would cover it, and then weekend coverage. So there is no weekend coverage right now with the current schedule. So again, anyone called in during weekends incurring overtime would be covered with that line.
And I guess the question goes, have we looked at the way the scheduling works where that could be filled on a seven-day-a-week basis, potentially putting it more to the salaries line and less to the overtime portion?
Well, we haven't looked at that. It's a matter of staffing, and I'm not sure if we would be able to do seven-day coverage a week with the staffing that we have at this point. So that's something we maybe could look into.
Okay, thank you.
Chief, this is Lisa. With respect to your line for technical supplies, 5627, is that, does that number include, you know, in your ability to stock up on PPEs? Because the number seems to be the same, you know, hasn't really changed that much. It's gone up a little bit.
Lisa, what page are you on?
I'm sorry, chief, I'm on page, it looks like 43? Yeah, 43. And then over to 44, it explains under technical supplies, that includes different things like, you know, first aid and so on. I just wondered, does PPE get included in there, and are we certain that we have a space to include an ability to stockpile?
The bulk of the technical supplies on page 43 is for the Detective Bureau.
Okay.
That money is for equipment that they need and use during the course of the fiscal year as part of their investigations. So there wouldn't be any PPE per se built into that line, but if you go to the next page on the patrol, under technical supplies, that would be the line that we would use for that stuff.
Yeah. Okay. So again, that number rate is similar to 19, 2019, 2020, correct? I'm looking at that correctly? Yeah.
That's correct.
Okay. And so I just want to make sure that you're comfortable that having built-in a cushion, you know, if the market opens up, then you need to be prepared, that's all.
I get your point, anticipating maybe PPE purchases throughout the next fiscal year?
Yeah.
If you're comfortable.
The state stockpile has recently really begun to flow here every Wednesday. Region 3 is distributing resources based on call volume. So ambulance and fire may be getting more items or less items based on their calls. We seem to be getting weekly, a healthy supply of gloves, healthy supply of face shields now that has caught up. Where we are deficient right now is N95 masks and surgical gowns are nowhere to be found. I can't find them through private vendors, and from what I'm being told, the federal government has seized them for surgical use, medical use only. But we have a sufficient supply, I believe, to get us well through the fall. I would think by then, if we were still short on gowns, etc., I think we can come with alternative measures to satisfy those needs. But to add additional money at this point, I don't think is necessary.
Okay, thank you.
Could I, I was just gonna add that also anything that's related to the COVID situation is not being added to their general budget. It's submitted to a separate line item for reimbursement through FEMA, so you won't see that really increasing in its budget that we're treating it separately and ideally at 75% reimbursement.
Okay, thank you, Mona.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions of the Police Department? Okay, I think we'll move on then. Thank you, chief. Thank you, sergeants. Thank you, attendants. I will move on to fire. Okay, I'm gonna open it up. Is there anyone who has any comments or questions with respect to the Fire Department budget? I think I had a quick question. I'm gonna look for it.
Chief, while we're waiting for the mayor's question, my question is regarding the training fire box that you guys had in back. Did insurance finally pay all that, and did you already get that, or?
We haven't received that yet. We expect that probably October area. There'll be some site work. Kirma has Kirma has agreed to cover all of it, except the small deductible. So we have contracted with a distributor to provide a new fire blast trailer.
Thank you.
Chief, I had a question. We're seeing the training budget as a pretty good cut. Is that because those training sessions just aren't being held now in the era of social distancing and all that?
It's yes. So we are resuming training in June. But when we developed the budget, we expected our typical year with, you know, our normal average recruitment of 12 prospects. In 2020, it's been anything but typical at this point. We reduced the budget due to the lack of recruitment during the COVID crisis. Once we do bring someone on, we also have a six-month trial period with the recruits, during which time all the training is in-house. After that, after they've become acclimated to the workload, to the commitment, that's when we send them to certification school. And currently, we've done no recruiting this calendar year. We have two potential members in the pipeline, and both are coming to us certified. We felt that was a realistic cut. So and, you know, the last thing on that is, you know, we don't have a crystal ball with this COVID crisis, and we have no clue on the future effect that it's gonna have on recruiting.
On the communications, that was already another big cut. Is that because we're starting to get ahead of replacing some of the outdated equipment, or can you tell us about?
5532 is an all-encompassing account which covers everything from the pages which the firefighters carry, the members carry, to portable radios, to mobile radios, and everything in between. The reduction you're seeing is, and staffing levels are remaining current, the reduction you're seeing is we're able to do some additional purchasing this year, and we're able to reduce next year's by doing so.
And I guess similar question for the turnout gear, is that we're able to get ahead of it out of this year's budget?
Let me get my notes on my turnout gear here, please. This, again, this line provides for all our PPE, because there was a question to the Police Department earlier about PPE, so it all comes under this budget. And it also covers all the repairs to the PPE, along with structural firefighting suits. You're gonna find helmets, hoods, gloves, boots, and all the ancillary items that go along with it. And yes, because of the anticipated slowdown in recruitment, we were able to drop this back somewhat.
And then finally, you had a note about, on chemicals, about the non-P-FAS foam replacement. Are we, are we pretty much good with the transition away from the PFAS, or is that gonna be something that we continue to work towards?
We are gonna we're gonna handle or do our best to begin the turnover in this budget. With the COVID slowdown, we do have some additional monies that we can do that. We carry on the trucks about 150 gallons of concentrate goes out with us. With that said, that's what we're looking to change over. We have about 600 gallons of concentrate on a trailer in the firehouse, and one of our target hazards is the tank farm on Dividend Road. We will address that, and we will also talk to the Dividend Road tank farm about about switching it out to PFAS. The importance on the PFAS, though, is we actually had a spill earlier this year, where we had a valve fail on one of the piece of fire apparatus, and we lost about 20 gallons. And you have to have a cleanup contractor now come in, and that cost us about $3,000 to clean up. So we need to get rid of this, and we need to start making the change out. From an environmental standpoint, from a safety standpoint, it can be considered a carcinogen, just all those different angles, and it looks like we're gonna do the majority this budget season.
Thanks.
Chief, I have a couple of questions for you, if I may. One of the items in the budget under, bear with me, page 50, part-time storm standby under your firefighting budget. It, it's a number that doesn't seem to get used consistently. Can you just explain what it relates to?
Again, this year has been a unique year. We had no standby costs. What that is, that's a safety-based account, whereas we put members will be assigned to a station during a storm. It's for their safety for not responding from home during, say, a winter storm when the streets are closed down, but it's also for the citizen's safety where we can get an apparatus assignment out quicker because we have people inside the firehouses when the road conditions are slow.
So you're housing people at the Fire Department versus being at home?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all weatherman-related. Mother Nature dictates that one.
I was happy with the mild winter personally, so I'm good with that one.
Great, I agree.
The other one that I'm gonna guess is probably out of your control, and I don't want to steal Council Emanuel's usual thunder, but it's the fire hydrant service, which is up 12%, and that seems to be directly related to MDC.
That's exactly what it is. We have about 625 public fire hydrants that are inspected and tested and maintained by MDC. Obviously, the reliability is of the greatest importance. But MDC dictates that cost.
And I guess I'm MDC's had their hand in our pocket in many areas, and we've had discussions with them. But it's a 12.5% increase. And I'm assuming it's a water charging increase. It can't be sewer.
From what I understand, and you also gotta remember, Alan, that we did increase the hydrants in the town.
Okay.
As subdivisions, buildings, etc. go up, we increased the public hydrant. So this, this line will go up a little bit each year as we grow.
It's nothing to do with water. It's just the maintenance of the the hundreds of hydrants we have throughout town.
25 right now on the public hydrants.
But did we have a 12% increase in the number of hydrants, or?
No, they did go up also, Alan. Yes.
Okay.
I think the breakdown is 145. Hydrant.
Thank you. Those are the two questions I had.
Are there any more questions of the Fire Department?
Madam Mayor, I'll just have one more question for the chief. Chief, under supervision, I see in the budget we're adding a part-time administrator. Can you explain that a little bit?
That has to do with a retirement in the Fire Department of a person that used to be responsible for the day-to-day, the daytime operations of the fire stations. So with that person retiring, we just budgeted in there a part-time position if needed to manage the day, daytime operation of the Fire Department, as well as, I might could probably elaborate on the amount of paperwork that maybe has grown over the years and so on. So it's more replacing a volunteer who was working during the daytime in that fire station who has since retired, and just providing that position so that the department can keep up with their requirements, filings, and so on.
Okay, so it's going from a volunteer position, someone who's retired, moving to a position we probably may need to fill as a paid position. moving to a position we probably may need to fill as a paid position.
We had a, a very confident and competent and engaged individual who was covering this during the day while he worked here full-time. He's retired out of the suppression side of things, leaving a, a very large hole in the daytime operations. And quite a bit happens during the day. So we felt that, felt it would be appropriate to put a part-time administrator in.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, the question that I thought I had for you, Chief Custer, Chief Gary, I actually have for Chief Custer. So if I may go back, may I ask you not, one, just one more question, Chief Custer? On, on page 45 of the budget.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm just curious about the uniforms and the cleaning. I'm just curious about the little spike. I mean, it's a significant spike since a couple of years ago. And then, then this, you know, $2,600 spike now.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering why.
Despite, what's causing that in that line is all the new hires. And unfortunately, some of the turnover we've had in the past year. So when a new officer comes on, you know, we outfit that officer with the uniforms and the equipment, including the ballistic vest. And what is it per officer, like $2,000, $2,500? Also, with the new officers going into the academy, we have to purchase all the academy uniforms and workout gear and so forth and so on. So the main driver of that spike has been bringing onboard these new people to fill the vacancies.
Okay, thank you. So if there's no more questions of the fire department, we will continue on. Thank you, Chief Gary. Parks and Recreation.
You skipped Community Development.
What did I skip?
Community Development Services. Is that next?
Oh, I'm going to get the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I was going by the list.
Are there any questions of Parks and Rec?
This is more of a general question. It clearly applies to Parks and Rec. And maybe everybody can answer when they get to it, is this idea of like having only kind of a semi-functioning box and rec right now, right? In terms of day-to-day operations, right? So what I have in front of me is the numbers up to like 331, right? And the, the spend until 331. And until 331, you have like, you know, 748,000 spent and like the, the doctor, it was a million. I guess my general question is for everyone, and we can start with Parks and Rec, is what happens to, in, in this COVID situation, to that unspent amount? And how are you taking care of that?
So a couple of things to point out. Generally, as it comes to the parks budget, we do a lot of spending in, for both parks and the recreation side, but we do a lot of spending in the spring normally. So you'll see that some of the, the aquatics line items have some money in them. And that's just because we, we haven't determined whether or not we're opening up a pool. We have had, you know, we do operate a year-round indoor facility at the high school. And we have not had guards working the last two months. So you're going to see some unspent money with the part-time salaries on the aquatic side. You're also going to see money left over on, most of the money you're going to see unspent is within the Parks Division in the spring. But that's just because some of our, our line items probably haven't been updated since your March 31st statement. We're still doing everything that we would normally do in terms of, you know, overseeding, fertilizing, things of that nature. We are saving some money on the part-time salary side right now, just because we, we are limited in the amount of people we can have on staff right now. We're going one guy per truck. I've got, you know, seven full-timers plus three part-timers that are working right now. So, um, where you'll see some savings, you know, you'll see it in the part-time side. But we still are spending money right now, just with upkeep of properties all around town. So there will be money spent though.
Yeah, and I guess like. Any surplus we have in any of these departments is a good thing because it flows back into our fund balance that the rating agencies like to see grow as well. So again, a lot of these past budgets were developed for the uncertain or the surprises that come along. And so if we do have a year where we don't spend as much as we had in past years, that any of that surplus does flow into fund balance.
And that's great, John. Thank you for that. I, I guess what I want to do is like quantify that number. If you have updated numbers, because these are definitely a month over, right? At least. So if you can update those numbers in somewhere on an Excel sheet or wherever, I'd love to.
Yeah, I don't do that. That's, that's, that's a munish thing. I did look at some of them earlier today. But you know, we're, we're actually still doing some things right now that, again, this is, this is the time of year where we do a lot. We do spend money this time of year because we're, we're upkeeping properties. We're taking care of, you know, our normal run-of-the-mill spring activities. So.
No, no, Craig, I completely understand that. I get what I was trying to get at was as the mayor has like put forth, we have a vision of a two-year budget, really. We don't want to do this on a just what is in front of basis, right? We want to plan for two years as we, as we have like laid out that vision and the mayor has laid out that vision. So keeping that vision in front of us, what I want to do and what the council wants to do is to have a good idea of what our numbers are going to look like next year. Because anybody can, basically, if you need a newspaper, you know that it's not going to be better than what it is this year, right? So what I'm trying to get at is just to some kind of a quantification. It might be imperfect. I completely get that correct. And I'm not like, really, I started asking this question when you, your department came along. But this basically applies, John, to everyone, every one of the departments. So I, I don't know, like if you can quantify this at least.
Understand that when we print the books, we print them as how they stand as of March 31st.
Sure.
What we provide the finance committee every month is a monthly budget book listing of all the budgets and how they stand. So that will be going out to the finance committee, I think, this week for their meeting next week. So if you'd like, we could include, we could either send electronically or include a copy of how the, the April numbers look on a budgetary basis.
That'd be great. Thank you, John.
And John, just to quote, the meeting's this Thursday at 4:30 for finance.
Right. Right. The reports are available now if you wanted to.
Yeah, no, that'd be great.
Forward it before finance? I don't know.
Greg, hey, kind of some along the lines of that. I know every, we were talking about trying to leave some fields empty to get them to rejuvenate themselves. Obviously, you had a unique opportunity this spring, you know, trying to put something positive spin. How's that going to help us in the long run? Does that help us from a cost perspective or just performance perspective? Any other little projects you've been able to do because there has been inactivity on the fields and things?
Yeah, this, that's a good question. This is kind of shaking up the way we do our daily operations this time of year. You know, we've actually been able to do some work in some areas that we haven't been able to, to do in a while. I don't know if some of you have been to Town Hall, but we replaced all the curbside, all the curbside beds all around Town Campus, which was a project that we've been, you know, looking to do, but we haven't been able to do it. So we were able to take care of that. We were also, we've actually just been able to, you know, do some extra work on the fields that we don't normally get to do in the spring season because, you know, we're, we're prepping fields and getting them ready for high school games and youth games, you know, every single day of the week. And we were also able last week, yeah, I think it was last week, to get into the dog park and actually do some overseeding and some slicing to the dog park. As you guys know, the, the dog park is usually open year-round. So it's, it's virtually impossible to go in there unless you want to shut it down. And I don't want to get my head bitten off. No pun intended. That was a pretty good one.
Hey, Craig, you all set, Jeff?
Yeah, thanks.
Craig, I was hoping I can offer a question on the grounds aspect of it. I noticed that I didn't see any savings around overtime. Can you offer some background on what that overtime consists of?
So our overtime consists of winter call-outs. So our guys are responsible for all town buildings, schools for, you know, snow removal and then any special events that the department has. So, you know, our, our ball fest, our, our breakfast with the Easter Bunny or Winter Wonderland, those types of events. And then, you know, again, I, we, we asked for more also because their rates are also going up and we added a guy in our budget last year. So, you know, I wanted to try and put forth the responsible number there that best reflects kind of what we're, you know, we're, we're using in OT.
No, I appreciate that. Considering the, our, our economy at this time, I didn't know if any of that still fell in under that, that topic. But again, thank you for the background.
Craig, I got a question. I know in, in the past years, we always talked about the, the tree care.
Yes, sir.
Whether or not to go, you know, try and ask other towns if we needed help or anything like that. On page 74, 75, the tree care, your latest proposal was cutting that 3,000. Is that worth it? I mean, are you seeing more work for, I mean, are you seeing less work for trees? Or more work? Is it worth cutting three?
You know, I was asked to cut 2%, so I had kind of had to go through and figure out the best line items. We were actually asking for, in my additional, we had asked for an additional 5,000 because I, we wanted to go into Dividend Pond, into the trails and actually start cleaning up some of the trees that were damaged from, from the beavers. So really, that was additional work that I was looking to, to take care of, that I had asked for an additional 5,000 in that account. So I just cut that, you know, back to 2,000.
Okay. So you're comfortable with 37?
Yes.
All right. Same page on the part-time salaries. Given your current situation, could that come down at all? Because as of 331, it was around 70. Do you think you're going to be using 30?
For the rest of this year?
Yeah.
No, no, we're not. But the reason for that is, again, we're, we're in a staff shortage because we're limited to one person per truck right now. I'm also trying to limit the number of the guys that we have in, in our garage. You know, just due to this COVID-19 situation. So I will not be spending the rest of that this fiscal year. But usually I would be spending close to the amount I have allotted. Because again, we have to remember in this, this time of year, usually I've got an additional probably 10 guys that are seasonal part-timers. And I get more summer help from, from the college kids that come in around May and go May to August. But this time of year, I have, you know, dedicated crews that I have on ball fields, for example. I know someone had asked me a question earlier about where are we saving this time of year? We're also saving in field supplies in the turfis end because we're not trying to take water off baseball fields to get ready for the high school games and in the Little League games.
Right.
So, you know, yes, we will see some savings in that line item right now. And that's only due to the fact that I can't really bring any additional help in at this current time. Hoping too soon.
Okay. The pool on page 80, 81, pool repairs. You're cutting 14.7, so a net of four.
I was able to do some of that work this fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Good. Those are just like the small Band-Aids, whereas the bigger stuff would fall, fall under CIP, right?
Yes. Yeah. Those were a couple of controllers and a pump replacement that we are proposing. Pumps basically for the outdoor pool and the baby pool plus a controller. But we are able to, to do it this fiscal year. So help out the budget next year.
On the same page, on the part-time salaries, I know your, your proposal is to cut 20. Can you do any more?
Potentially. You know, I just want everyone to be aware that minimum wage is going up. I wish that that wasn't the case, especially in a time like this. But these, the salary increase does reflect the minimum wage increase. So, you know, that's something we could take a look at and maybe it comes down to us, you know, adjusting our, our pool hours, you know, to account for that if, if need be.
Okay. All right. Thanks, Craig. Good job.
Also, John?
Yes, thank you.
Craig, just a question. I know right now the ball fields in general are not being used. You know, everything's put aside. But just following the, the social media usage of our town parks, the trails, the hiking seems to have really increased. And is that creating additional work, kind of offsetting some of the ball field maintenance?
Well, yeah, like I said before, you know, we've been able to do some different projects, even just around Town Hall with the dog park. Essentially, you know, other than an increase in, in trash, you know, trash removal, we definitely have more trash removal at the trails right now and that's handled by our crew. Our guys essentially right now are mowing. You know, so a lot of the things you see from the curb side, everything looks fine and dandy. It's some of the other details that we can't get down into right now because our guys are, you know, every guy's on a mower right now and that's not usually the case. So. Another area you're going to see some savings too on the park side right now is, is in sanitation. We do not have as many portalets out in our parks. Can I answer that?
Yep. And then heading into, I mean, next year, and I know you don't have a crystal ball. I know the summer skate project is pretty much budget neutral. You know, it covers its own costs.
Yep.
Anticipation that the pool in the high school may open at some time before September? I mean, what do you, I, I know it's a, it's not a fair question in the sense, we don't know the outcome, but what are you anticipating?
Well, I, I guess to answer your question, that the, the pool at the high school is also really contingent upon when we can get into the high school. You know, when that building is, is available for us to use. In general, you know, I don't have an answer right now. I think there is a task force that's working on giving us some answers about the pools. I don't have an answer right now. I think there is a task force that's working on giving us some answers about the pools. And if or when they're going to open. Um, so, you know, I wish I had a crystal ball to answer that. I would say if we do not open there, there, there's obviously going to be a little bit of cost savings there. Um, just on the part-time salaries end alone, you know, so it's, it's a very tough situation. We've been really, we've had multiple meetings, um, not only with my staff, um, and, and John, but, you know, with Charlie Brown, but we've also had some regional meetings as well with some of the other municipalities surrounding us that are within the central Connecticut Health District. So, you know, we're trying to get as much information as we can to make, you know, the best decision. And in the end, the, the best decision is going to be made with the safety of the public in mind.
And, and the last question, uh, on the pools with the outdoor pool, you know, obviously we'll have to get that ready for the summer.
Yep.
Do you have like a, a drop dead date where, you know, if they don't give us an okay by X, we're pretty much stuck for the summer?
With respect to that, I, from start to finish, I, we could probably get that pool open in seven to 10 days.
Okay.
So, you know, if we were trying to get it open by July first, I, I'd like to know by the third week of June, whether or not it's a yay or a nay. Um, cause at that point we have to fill the pool and, you know, we have to, we have to hire someone to come in and do all the, the firing up. So, um, I don't necessarily have a drop dead date right now, but just so you guys know, it's, you know, it's a seven to 10 day process.
Thanks, Brett.
Yep.
So Alan, just, uh, if at some point we don't know, or I mean, we don't know soon enough, there's, the, doesn't make sense to open it at all? The pool, in other, in other words, it, ten day, you know, if we don't get it open, I mean, how, what's the pool sea, what's the outdoor pool season? It ends?
Middle of August, I think.
Oh, yeah. Historic, historically, the outdoor.
I think a lot of the pool is going to be driven by the health district, whether they'll allow, um.
I mean, it's a pretty good bet that we won't open the pool this year. No?
I, I wouldn't say that right now.
Okay.
Um, I think it's a little too premature to say that at this, at this current time. Um, you know, again, we're waiting for some, for some further guidelines from state officials, state department of public health, um, that'll trickle down to our local department of health and we'll work together with them to make a, you know, an educated decision.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, Chris.
Um, so just, I guess on the pool, um, and since I'm, this will be probably my questions. Uh, you know, do we have an ability to, to pivot? Um, you know, if we don't open the pool, I mean, we've, I think talked in the past about, um, we'll need some work. Uh, is there a chance to kind of shift some of the, the resources that would have otherwise been to operating the pools, maybe getting a jump on, on maintenance or other improvements in the area?
That's a tough question. I, I think, you know, we, we did take care of some of the issues with the pump replacements now, which was a great thing. Um, but if you're talking like bigger picture, like splash pads or, you know, things of that nature, you're talking more CIP funds. So, you know, the, I've got ideas, but the bigger ideas are, they're definitely CIP driven. So.
And then for, um, for program activities, you know, a lot of that is up in the air, probably can be driven by the health district. Um, do you have an approach for how we could, I guess, reinvest from physical activities to social distancing activities, um, either electric ones or like, like they say, drive-in movies are coming back. Like, do you have a plan? Cause you know, it would, it would be a drag not to have that kind of stuff in, in our town, especially when people don't feel connected and feel trapped in their houses. So do you have a plan for how we can, we pivot some of that if we have to?
Yeah, actually we had, um, we had already planned on changing our outdoor movie format in the parks from, you know, the, the, the movie in the park night and shifting that over to a drive-in format beforehand. So, uh, we, we actually were kind of ahead of the game on that. You know, as far as some of the activities, you know, we're getting a crash course in, in, um, social, I, I hope I don't have to use the term social distancing in the next year because I'm tired of using it, but we're, we're getting quite an education on some of the activities that we can and we can't do. Uh, one of the issues though, Chris, that's making it very challenging from our end is that the, uh, the information is constantly changing and, you know, we're trying to do our best to plan for these things. But the variable, which is size and distance, it's changing and then we're trying to account for what it's going to be in six weeks and we don't really know what it's going to be. So, you know, the worst comes to worst, we, we plan something and it doesn't come to fruition because of these requirements and it doesn't come to fruition. But, you know, we're trying really hard behind the scenes to, to account for some of these things. You know, we have been doing some virtual classes that have been pretty successful with yoga and some of our adult strength classes. We had a virtual five K run that we came up with. Um, so we've had some good participation. We've ordered, you know, we've had rec kits that we've delivered to the public. So we're getting creative and that's kind of what we do. So.
Yeah, I was gonna ask that as well, because I know you did have some of those, um, I've seen the ads for like the virtual yoga and, and some of those classes. So the response has been good because you wouldn't need to, I guess, spend any of that on advertising to let people like, to let people know they're happening. So far it does seem like the response has been good.
The response has been really good. The, the response has been really good. We're getting really good feedback. Um, you know, we did a survey back a couple of months ago and the, our marketing means is working, which is social media and, you know, through our website and, and our email blasting. So it's been working for us.
And my last question is like, you mentioned, most of your guys are mowing. Um, if it looks like some of the facilities, you know, won't be in use as they standard are, as they usually, the usual schedule is, um, does the mowing schedule get adjusted or do you give it like an extra week? What is that?
No. No, we, I mean, think of it as taking care of your own yard. You know, if you give it an extra week and don't get on it, all the grass is going to do is it's just going to keep growing.
People have seen my yard. They kind of know, uh, that can happen at times.
Yeah. So, you know, we have to constantly keep doing it. We can't pull guys off on that. Plus it's, you know, it's a heavy time of year for us to be fertilizing and putting that stuff down. So, you know, the grass is growing. We gotta, we gotta take care of the problems.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for Parks and Rec before we move on to facilities? Okay. Well, thank you. And we will move on. So I'm showing facilities, page eighty-two of our red book.
I guess I'll, I'll start off. Um, for light and power. John, can you give some insight on, since the change over to LED? I mean, are we seeing substantial savings or is it? I mean, it's still taking, uh, in, making impact?
Um, our problem's more dealing with this solar, um, plan that we worked out with Solar City, now Tesla, where, um, we're buying eleven cents a kilowatt from them directly. And then we're supposed to be getting credits on our, uh, ever sourced bills. But the way they applying some of the credits, uh, sort of unjustly goes towards the board of ed's accounts as opposed to the town side. So, uh, we need to meet with the board of ed and sort of chew up our, our, our bills with them. Um, as far as LEDs, uh, it, it sort of gets washed into this, uh, solar arrangement that we have. It's difficult to, to try to compare if we're savings greatly or, or not. Um, I don't know whether Phil could address probably maybe from a maintenance area. Uh, we're not replacing bulbs as frequently as we used to and, and items like that. But again, all our rooms pretty much have, uh, shut offs so that the, if there's no movement, you know, the lights are going off and, and so on. So this probably is some savings, but probably not as great as it's been advertised in the past. I don't know if you want to elaborate anything else, Phil.
Um, well, are we talking street lamps or are we talking building lamps?
Well, under facilities, I'm thinking for the light and power, like the parking lot and everything. Are those just parking lights, parking lot lights?
Yes, but I, what, what was your question?
Um, I'm just looking at the trend from eighteen, nineteen budget through nineteen, twenty. And it's, looks like it's going to be flat for twenty, twenty-one, but are we seeing any savings from the bulbs?
Right.
Can we knock that down thirty thousand?
I'm, I'm, if you don't mind, I'll probably add a couple of cents into that because I did look at, uh, the LED and there is a savings for that. You can see the increase in the number of LEDs and the savings for it. But you've got a combination, as John mentioned, of situations going on that the, the rate per kilowatt hour or the other, uh, uh, usages for like regular building usages has increased. So it's, it's kind of, uh, over covering over the effect of the savings of the LED. So the LED is helping. But then you're compounding it with an increase from the ever source kilowatt hour rate. And we're when it going into the Tesla situation where we're looking for credits from Tesla and billing it and credits are being shared with board of ed. So your answer to the LED is yes, the savings is there. But we're also having some other situations that we sort out on top of it. So for that line item, I think really it should stay flat at this point with the rates going up. It's a comfortable level.
Mona, is there, I mean, I'm just trying to, um, dig into the light and power line item.
Right.
Can you look at a year ago where we were? For that item? As of three thirty-one, twenty, it was two fifty-seven. And I'm just thinking with the fields and everything not being, or, you know, like that built, this, the municipal building's not being utilized as much. Do we still need as much lighting?
We could sort that account out and look at it.
Okay.
Just that particular street lighting alone. Yeah. Or, or Phil, you could probably just look.
Well, if I, if I can add, um, the LED retrofit originally was, uh, five years ago. So you would see, you would have seen a difference four years ago in a, in a bill. Um, the street lighting, I believe, was done two years ago.
It was a rolling, yeah.
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 So, um, you would, again, five years ago, with the majority of our buildings being LED, you would see that cost savings, you know, uh, a, a year or not kilowatt savings, I should say, a year after.
Um, I guess, Phil, are the lights being utilized as much as they were a year ago, seeing that we're not having meetings down at town hall and school?
Well, we don't have, we don't have, uh, real-time means, um, to read. Um, and it, in fact, that was, it would, it would have been one of my projects going forward to, uh, to, to real-time our buildings. So we can actually see, uh, in real time what the usages are. But, uh, I have, I, I don't have a tracking of that. No.
Okay. All right. I'm just seeing, I'm just trying to understand if there, if there was a cut to that line item, what impact it would be if things aren't being utilized as, as much as they would if the virus wasn't around.
Well, I mean, um, to be honest, you know, you're right. Uh, maybe there's, there is a lack of, uh, uh, use in the firehouses because they're not gathering for training and such. But they're still going in, they're still, you know, on calls, they still have to turn lights on, leave, come back. So there's still a usage of our buildings, even though, you know, we, we've had this two-month layoff. Um, my staff has been in just about every day during, especially the custodians doing their rounds of disinfecting behind people that were utilizing the buildings. So, you know, it's, it's tough.
Okay. Um, yeah, if you can, if you can maybe update the projection and give it to John, um, what you're, what you think it could be the final amount by June thirtieth, based on what you're seeing over the past couple of months. Um, and then on page eighty-four, custodian. Again, the current environment, part-time salaries, do you see us hitting sixty thousand?
No, it'll be under. We're still gonna, we're, I still need them because I'm going to be rolling them into the, uh, town hall. Um, even though the community centers that is closed. Okay. I mean, that, you would think that would help, but, uh, because of the, our friend COVID, I need to utilize them, uh, to do, uh, more extensive cleaning on a, on a consistent basis until further. Um, I have, you know, I have, I have a schedule set.
In, in terms of, in terms of that, what you were just saying, and that brings up a good point. Do you coordinate the cleaning efforts with board of ed and how they use their staff in the schools to?
Um, well, myself and Ron more, more so talk about our buildings and, and, you know, the facilities themselves, but no, not the, uh, custodial side.
Okay. So you don't see any opportunity for shared services in this area?
Hmm, not really, no.
If they're not, if their schools aren't being utilized and they're, they're not being cleaned as much, um, because of necessity, you don't.
I, I understand.
Their staff coming over to help you.
Yep. Well, I couldn't answer that without talking to Ron and having that discussion. But, um, going forward, I mean, I think we're going to be okay with the staff that we have.
All right. I just wanted to put it out there because every year we've been saying there's got to be more working together instead of.
Right. Well, our, our shared services are mostly our facility side.
Right.
You know, the attritions, um, um, you know, that just, just hands and arms, you know, to help each other, you know, we routinely do that.
Okay. All right.
And, and, and equipment.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Phil. I'm all set.
Hey, hey Phil, this is John, just along, along the same lines of, uh, John's comment. Um, around the part-time, the, um, and you, and I apologize if you've mentioned this already, um, but, uh, around the overtime, both on, uh, eighty, page eighty-three and, and, um, uh, both cases, is there any opportunities there as well, possibly, uh?
Well, um, for the custodial side, I know we've had a good year, um, because of snow. They do all our snow removal. Um, as far as the blowers and such for sidewalks and entryways and such. Um, but actually overtime is being used now. Um, cause we're doing, uh, two cycles of cleaning on weekends for the police department because it's a twenty-four, seven building. So, so some of that cost is, 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 is for that. Um, and again, going forward, you know, further forward, I'm not sure how long this is going to last, but, uh, you know, we think it's a very important building to keep on top of. Um, and then as far as the facilities, um, that's hit or miss because basically that overtime is for, uh, call-ins for the most part. Um, it also can be used for our, um, our, um, uh, maintenance, our PMs, because there's times where, uh, for instance, electrical panels, we can't shut down panels during the day. We have to shut down panels after hours. Um, and it's part of our PMs and, and the month, and then, uh, quarterly PMs for, for my electrician to go shut power, clean the panels, um, and, and turn, you know, power back on. So, um, and then again, we've had a good year as far as, uh, no breakdowns on call-ins. They seem to happen during the week. So that's a good thing in a way. Um, as far as the overtime, but, uh, that's what it's, that's what we use it for.
Appreciate the background. Appreciate the background.
I have a couple of questions and one's a follow up to Counselor Emanuel's question on the lights and power. And Mona, maybe it's something you could have for Thursday's finance. But I took a look at the April numbers and we're actually already over budget for the year at three forty eight. But my guess is there's probably a split out between the Board of Ed. There's some allocations to be done.
Yeah, actually, it's it's partially collecting some of the credits from Board of Ed. And what we're seeing is that some of the credits are happening on the bills and they stay on the ever source bill. So what we're going to end up having to do is probably book a a receivable because. At least with ever source, they're not giving us, you know, like, oh, you overpaid your bill and, you know, and here's a check for you. So so we are getting now the credit showing up, but we don't actually get the reimbursement. So it'll eventually balance itself out as we use the credit up. So it's it's kind of looks like a false overage, basically, because we haven't been able to to take advantage of the credits. And so I think we're going to see that we'll come right about where the projection is at this point, the last time I looked, which was actually quite recently.
Good, thank you. Phil, the question, I guess, within your budget on page eighty two. Under the building improvements, one of the items I noticed is. Parks and Rec's diesel gas tank replacement or addition. Could you explain that project a little bit?
Yeah, they they had a a gas dispensing tank on the property. And it was deemed not usable, so they red lined it. And I'll let possibly Greg also chime in. It's 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 for their gas operating mowers, trucks and that sort of thing. To keep them from having to go to the. The transfer station where the where the island is for for gas dispensing. So it's it's more located towards where the fields are and such. So they asked to to replace that with a newer up more up to code tank.
Yeah, we had, we, just so you guys know, we had a tank that was there as a diesel tank and it was red tagged. So it was taken off the lot. And. Now, like if we need to fill. Like the big mowers, for example, you know, Scotty's got to drive over to the yard or whoever's driving the. The wide area mower has to drive to the yard to fill it. Whereas before we had a tank on site where everyone could fill up in the morning. At our site and then, you know, go to wherever they were going for the day, so. You know, Walt does have a. A spare tank that he keeps on his truck that he fills, and if someone gets stuck somewhere, he can go and fill them up, but. That's kind of the the idea behind it. Instead of us having to drive to city yard. Or to to the transfer station to fill, we could do it at our building.
And do we, do you know what the the cost for a tank is? Are we talking a five thousand gallon tank, a smaller tank?
I think it's five thousand and they. Got estimates for about twelve thousand dollars for the install.
And and the reason, I'm familiar with these, I have these at work. And the interesting part I find is they're a very good convenience. But there's no cost savings in having diesel or gas delivered to your facility. You're basically saying paying the same cost as you are if you go to a local gas station. And I'm talking about buying, you know, eighty thousand gallons a year. There's it's pennies and the dollar difference, so it's just something to look at outside of the conveniences at a twelve thousand dollar convenience. Versus a corporate credit card that could go to any gas station.
I'll let Craig have his opinion. Sorry, Craig.
No, I mean, we also use it as a backup tank in case there's an issue at the yard. We use it as a backup tank.
I mean, I mean, how? How relevant is it to to operations? I mean, we the highway department tank is probably available twenty four seven in an emergency. And I know we have plenty of gas stations in town that sell both gas and diesel.
I mean, that's something.
The savings is you're not paying. You're not paying on the taxes. And we're buying high volume depending on the market when we do lock in. So we do save on. On taxes that you pay at the pump. I do I do know that we pay that gross receipts tax on either unleaded or. Or diesel, but that that's the savings there. And I would think we would put in a smaller tank. And then whenever the delivery comes for the highway department. They just swing down and fill up the Parks Department one. What do you what do you primarily?
Yeah.
Sorry, I misspoke.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I'm familiar with these and you could do a quarterly, a monthly twenty two ninety filing for the tax credit if that's the issue. I also know what a five thousand gallon tank, if you.
It's five hundred.
Five hundred gallons?
Yeah.
That's a real small tank, Craig.
It's five hundred, not not five thousand.
All right, I was gonna say at a five thousand gallon tank, the diesel company will provide a five thousand at no charge usually. If you're going to commit to X amount of gallons. So it's just something that I'd like to look at a little bit closer if you get some. I guess feedback to how relevant it is if it's a twelve thousand dollar line item.
What? Also, just so you guys understand, like, I understand the convenience piece of it, but it's also a time saving measure, so. I don't need to have guys that have to drive across town. You know, drive down to the yard to fill up, or if they report for a shift, they can fill up right there. So that, I mean, even for a snow shift too, if we need to get in the backhoe and, you know, they can fill it up there. They don't have to drive across town to fill it up, so. I mean, there is an opportunity cost in terms of like manpower. Yeah, I get it. I understand.
Thank you.
So I had a question on the on the heating fuel line. It wasn't always the case if we compare to what, you know, the heating fuel was just a couple of years ago, but with the prices, you know, falling. Have we seen a savings? Or do we, it looks like the year today could be somewhat the mild winter. But have we seen a savings of what we normally pay for for fuel and we think we could safely adjust that down a little bit? Are we able to lock in now that the rates are low? Or or is that something that floats? How does that work?
Usually. In the years ago, we would go in with CROG Purchasing Council and with six or eight other towns. To to buy fuel in as a group. But over the past few years, the studies have been done by their consultants that say. It's better just buying it from the CNG. You can't really save anymore by going out on the own on your own, so. We pretty much, I think, get the advantage of the market rates through CNG. And again, it's all based on. How cold our winter is and and so on, so. I think we're probably going to come in close to on budget. But I think that's because I think we've cut that line over the past few years, so. If we do have a cold winter, we probably will come in over budget. But the recommendation has always been over the past five, six years is to stay with the gas company.
And that heating fuel is natural gas and not.
Everything's natural gas except for the Kennedy House. That's the last number two heating oil. Years ago, I used to have a number of buildings that were dual fuel. Where you'd be, you'd you'd fill up with the number two heating oil, but you use primarily. Gas, and if there's a cold snap, the gas company tell you to switch over to. To oil to save gas for whatever reasons. That philosophy has been dead in the water for years and we've been. Pretty much converting all our buildings over to natural gas over the years.
Okay, if there are any more questions on the Facilities Department budget. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
We will move to Community Development.
Hi, Madam Mayor and Counselors, Jim Solomon. The full name of my department is the Community Development Services and Public Works Department. So it's it's rolled up of a lot of different departments, planning, zoning, wetlands, engineering, building department. Then in the public and the engineering department, the public works and is the highway garage, road maintenance and sanitation. So as John said at the beginning of the workshop. We had a budget that we proposed and it came back, let's look for a two percent reduction, which is what we've all done. The total cuts that I came up with was close to a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. The overall budget was about eight point four million. A lot of that being fixed costs such as our favorite people, the MDC. We also have the tipping fees and hauling fees for the trash. So these are all fixed, but I still took two percent out of the rest of it. So basically, it came down to about an eight point two million dollar budget. So we looked at overtime and things of that nature. So I don't know if you want to discuss a specific, excuse me, question. About an item or. That's just a way of introduction.
Thank you for the clarification because we were all looking at Community Development saying, wait a minute. Which section from this budget is that?
There is no departments in the index here, so like I said, it's planning, engineering, building and all of those.
Thank you. Okay.
So if nobody wants to.
Jim, hey, sorry, I was trying to talk out on you. Just maybe in general, kind of the theme of the other discussions, talk about. What your departments have done or were not able to do or were able to do because of the COVID crisis. Are there savings? Are you doing other projects you weren't going to plan on doing or maybe just kind of talk about in general?
Well, we're still continuing to do the work that we had planned in the spring. We're preparing for paving season. Which at this point, we're going to be doing about a one point two million dollar project. And that requires preparation by the highway department to get catch basins ready. Because we changed the, so we removed the top and put new catch basin tops on. As far as engineering, they're working on actually two big projects. The streetscape on Silas Dean was approved. That should be going forward pretty quickly. That's a federal aid grant project of about, I think it's close to two million dollars. In addition, we've got dividend road being constructed as we speak. They're going to start milling the side roads, I think Wednesday. And that's another project that's about eight hundred thousand dollars. So we're continuing our work. It's not the same, obviously. So it's not like we're going to the office every single day and like it was, so. But we're working remotely and then the guys that have to come in come in.
So as far as dollars and cents, any, I mean, it's kind of been pretty much business usual for a large extent, it seems like, so. Dollar and cents hasn't really changed much or?
Well, I, you know, like the other department head said, yes, there's got to be some savings there. We have the pool cars, for example. Folks aren't using them as much as they would have been using them. So, yeah, there's savings there.
What about salt?
Salt, yes, we.
Is that your big saver?
Yes, we we didn't expend all the money on the salt this year. I don't know what the savings was, it was about twenty thousand dollars or so. So salt, we didn't use. As you know, relatively mild winter, but we still had ice callouts and snow to take care of.
Thank you.
Jim, I have a couple of questions. Can start on page fifty eight, fifty nine. For the motor fuel, can can we just go back to what we were talking about before? How often do you lock in a rate?
So what happened, Counsel Emanuel? We looked, as John said, we look at the trends. And and when it was going down. We tried to lock in so that we could come up with a number for this particular budget. We also fine tuned the actual usage of. I looked back, I think, three years to come up with an average of what we would need for this coming budget. And that's how we arrived at the number. I believe we we locked in about one point eight. For fuel.
A dollar eighty?
Dollar eighty, yeah. And that was before, you know, the bottom dropped out, obviously, but that's what we're going to test.
So are you, I mean, have you seen savings, Jim, from not having to go around town as much?
I I'm assuming we are having some savings. I haven't seen it. I don't know what the usage is. But I.
Part of part of our problem is we also commit to gallons to be used. So. So even if we do have savings, we are sort of committed to the. To the seller that we would buy X number of gallons for that season, so it's sort of a double edged sword on this.
Right, okay.
Differential between what we had last year and what this budget shows, it's twenty six thousand dollar savings, twenty six thousand ahead. Before we start.
I think last year we were floating. Buying on the spot market because we thought the price was too high, but it continued to go up. And then I think around December, we started seeing that it turned and started going down.
I saw I saw the the cut there, Jim. I thought maybe there could be more. Okay, the next page sixty two, sixty three. Oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry. The next was the next one. Yeah, sixty four, sixty five, I'm sorry. The grinding service, I know that's, I know twenty thousand. How are you going to take care of of that with the branches?
Well, because of the COVID, one of the side effects was simply that people have a lot of time on their hands and they're putting lots and lots of brush out. So we're doing what we normally do and we're picking it up and bringing it down to the gravel pit. But I think this the cost will be offset. By what we received, I don't recall exactly, John. The extra money that we had received in the past to offset that cost.
That's that money we got from CRRA when they closed out their operations and they sent a equity distribution to all the member towns. So we're shifting all the sanitation, transfer station type of costs or. Over to that line, which is in the non reoccurring account. I I'm not sure whether it's thirty two thousand or forty thousand something, but it's somewhere in that ballpark.
So, Jim, if you needed to start this up again in the fall, you have the equipment, right?
No, we hire somebody.
You hire, okay, I thought it was, I thought it was down the town road.
No, we will contract with somebody to come in and grind it all up.
Okay. I think. Oh. I'm sorry, back to sixty sixty one. I I know my question. On this, on the. On the salt in pretreatment, I mean, can we squeeze anything more out of that?
Well.
I mean, you have an inventory, right, that's left over?
We we have some. We have some and and normally what I would do is. Whatever money I had left over from this year, I would fill up the the bit, but I checked with Joe and the barn's pretty full. Like it's been a mild winter, so we're okay. And it's really a question of what crystal ball are you going to use as far as trying to figure out what next winter will bring? I think this winter was a freak occurrence. You know, so we have to plan for at least sixteen seventeen storms plus a bunch of ice storms on top of them. So, I mean, I did cut it and we're hoping. So, I mean, I did cut it and we're hoping for the best. That's all we can do.
But John, if this comes in around, let's say, let's say it comes in at 90 at the end of the fiscal year. And we had budgeted for, and we budget next year for 120. But the total, but the expense that would be needed was 160. Where would that 40 come from? Contingency? Or?
Yes, yes.
You're on mute, John.
I know, I'm trying to figure out all those numbers you threw at me.
You're the finest.
And then, and all that, but it would be a matter of, hopefully, maybe we have a line with some surpluses in that budget. If not, if we don't take it from contingency, we could do some cost budget shifting from other departments that might have a surplus in the line as well. But, but we, we find a contingency or surplus from other departments' budget lines.
Okay.
John, we looked at the historical trends. You can see that actuals in 18, 19 was close to 170. So with that cut, we'll be down to 155 and we just have to make it work.
Right. I mean, it's been like, I mean, these seasons have been like roller coasters.
Yeah.
And I think this season was an anomaly.
I think.
The other, the other question, going back to Phil was answering for the buildings on the lighting, the street lighting, can that be cut at all?
I wish it could be, but I'm not sure if we're seeing the savings that EverSource had promised. I think their cost of electricity went up. They've changed all the streetlights to LEDs. So I'm not sure, I don't know if Mona has any current information on it, but.
I think when, if we're making another projection that was requested, it should go hand in hand with the, with all EverSource, so we can look at them together.
And this one, Mona, has nothing to do with the solar field?
Yes, it does, yes. This is definitely one of the items that is, given their.
With the highway department, street lighting? I thought it was.
No, this is all street lighting.
Town street lighting?
All town street lighting, yes. Yes.
Okay. Yeah, if that could be looked at too.
Yes, actually, that, that may be able to reduce.
Okay, I'm all set. Thanks a bunch, Jim.
Jim, I had a question about line. It is 53, 27. It's related to stormwater management. We're taking 44,000 out of there. It was just a couple of years ago that they updated the stormwater treatment regulations that requires the town gun responsibilities. Are we still able to meet all those guidelines with the reduced number?
Well, a lot of that was to do actual reconstruction of outlets and things like that, which I think we're just going to defer into, into future years. We have a five-year permit. So because of the economy, we wanted to defer it and that's, that's a big number. I think the DEEP who runs this program would be satisfied with that answer. So I'm just going to cut it.
And how many years we have left on that permit?
I believe it's three more years.
All right, thank you.
Jim?
Yes.
I was just curious, on the paving project, the bonding in the paving project, when you get the 2 million a year to do the highways, does it, do you have a cost factor that it costs the town to run that 2 million a year? Or does that 2 million pay for everything you have to do to accomplish that? Does that, when you draw down to do the roads, every administrator, every truck, every, everything, buying the asphalt, everything, is that acceptable cost against that 2 million? Or do we incur as a town a cost to run that project?
It's difficult to break that down. That's a, that's a good point. But as far as paying our salaries and things of that nature as soft costs, I, I think that's part of the bond. Inspection, engineering would be. John, I don't know if that's part of the bond. So that we could offset our, our costs for setting the road up to get paved as far as catch basin drainage work, et cetera.
Yeah, anything associated with the roads, materials and catch basins and all that would be charged against the project if we need to have consultants come in for measuring to make sure the thickness is correct and all that. But any staff that's doing any work, it will come out of their, their salaries in the budget. We don't charge back Jim's and Steve's time and so on. So that would be not the only cost, town staff cost would come out of the, the budget associated with this project.
So I'm just wondering what the, what the cost of, to the town is of that, aside from the debt service of the, is there's a secondary cost to doing that project?
Well, as John said, the, the materials, we would charge against that if we needed to buy additional catch basin tops, block, culverts, you know, and pipes. We charge all of that, but as far as.
It sounds like it's, if it's just town salaries, it sounds like it might be a nominal cost to run that project.
It is for the most part, yeah, because we, we go to vendors and go to the low bids, you know.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Jim, I got a couple of questions for you on page 50, 58, 59, if I may.
Yes.
Recognizing that, you know, vehicles aren't running as much right now. So hopefully, we're able to do some preventive maintenance, you know, while they're sitting idle, some of the fleet vehicles, et cetera. But the, the items, tires and tubes, looks like we spent very little year to date. We're projecting to use about half the balance, but we think we're going to need another 25,000 next year. Is there some room to buy? I'm assuming we're using fairly standard tires on some of the fleet cars, purchasing them into this year's budget and maybe being able to reduce it next year instead of having to flow through fund balance?
The, the pool cars are just ordinary automobiles. The heavy highway trucks and payloaders and things, those are the most expensive tires. So if we have to replace a set of tires on all those things, we're talking thousands of dollars. So there could be some savings if we bought them and just stored them. I'd help to check with, with Joe. We'll have to get back to you on that to see if we can pre-purchase.
Yep. That would just, you know, that would be instead of flowing it through fund balance and worrying as next year, that would be a plus. I know we're using about a million four of fund balance. And I would pretty much look at the same item on vehicle parts. And I don't know if we, we inventory anything, but I got to assume there's some common parts that we would be keeping, certain types of filters that are common to multiple vehicles that maybe we could put into inventory and.
Yeah, we'll look at that also. We'll check that. We do have a parts room with a lot of inventory in it. So that if, if it's a common part, we have it. We don't go out and buy one part and, you know.
Right.
We stock them up. So we'll see how much more we can get into stock to reduce the effect next year.
And then is there your maintenance program? Are we able to expedite some of the projects, the PMs that you're doing and kind of work it down where we're in a slower period now, knowing or hoping that the fall gets back to normal? I got to say hoping.
Yeah, I wish I could predict that. We're still using all the equipment and as Greg said, we got one person per vehicle. So we're using the vehicles differently, so they're all being used. And we, one at a time, you know, as they need PMs, we, we get them in. So it really hasn't reduced anything. Except the pool cars have been getting idle.
A good point on the one person per vehicle, you know.
Right.
You know, you're working at home so long, there's nobody in a vehicle.
Right.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
I'm referencing back to Councilor Armad's question on the road work. First of all, is there a police presence during the road construction? Or does that come out of the police budget or the?
We pay the police under the referendum clause. They're, they're not needed for every job. Some of the less traveled subdivision roads, we can get away with a flag person rather than a police officer. On some of the busier roads, well, I'll give you a dividend road as an example, it'll be police officers that's needed. That's coming out of that contract, not the referendum anyways. So it depends on the road. If it's a major road, yes, and we pay for them out of the referendum.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, are there any more questions or comments with respect to community development? Now we will thank you, Jim, very much. And we will move along to IT. IT, John?
Hello, everyone.
So maybe you just want to explain what the information tech services are?
So the information tech services, that, that covers a lot of the outsourced things that we have, including internet connections, you know, Amazon Web Services, where we host all our long-term video, cloud backup services, website management. That's the primary mover for that account. The 15,000 that was slated to go towards cybersecurity monitoring. You know, we, it was a new service, so in trying to maintain our normal operations, that's the one we chose to, to go without, seeing as it was something that we haven't had as of yet.
So John, I have a question for you. First of all, thank you very much for all the great work you guys are doing, your group is doing with regards to putting this whole operation online, which is really commendable in, in short time, you are able to like pull this all together. So in this, this, your department is becoming much more of a backbone of any organization, I guess. I can say that in general, but there's a line item here, which I think it does not belong to your department per se, but it's probably a general line item for everyone across town hall. Photocopy, right? And I have a problem with that. That's a lot of money, $34,000 worth of photocopy. I mean, I don't know, like maybe John, I, assuming that this is a general item, doesn't belong to IT per se, like John is not, you know, personally using that within IT, probably the whole town halls, right? I think we are moving into a digital age and I think that number should be drastically lower than what it is. We should not be as, just as a general matter of making copies worth of $34,000. And, and, and just to like, finish my thought on that, I think it's better to have that budget lower just to incentivize people not to do that as a matter of, you know, going forward of how we do business. I think in general, we should be moving more towards digital anyway, just in line with what I was saying in the beginning of my comment. So I just would like to know, like, why that photocopy cost is not going down?
That, that photocopy line relates to all the photocopiers in the various departments as well as any of our printers as well. And it also includes anytime we need to replace our cartridges for ink and so on and, and so on. And this was developed, this concept was developed a number of years ago. And so, and it was happened just to be put into the IT department at the time because I was the, the person that was in charge of that department that went out and, and got this contract for the town. So it is a, it does cover, you know, copiers at the police department, the fire department, town hall departments and so on. So plus, we do get, we just call them up and they just send out any cartridges that we need to replace and so on.
No, I completely understand, John. I completely get that. I'm just like saying, I understand it's for the whole town hall. That's what my premise was. But just, we are, we are changing cartridges, whatever we're doing, it's because of the usage, right? I'm just saying, I think we should more, move more towards green. And one of the ways to do that is actually cut the budget because that will incentivize people not to print or copy or like just change habits, I guess. That's one way people, economists say you can do it by actually cutting the budget.
Because a lot of times now we're getting contracts sent to us emailed and so on. And we need to print out some of those and sign the documents and so on. I agree, we should try to switch over to more, but it just seems like so much stuff is being sent to us through electronically to try to keep track of it all, as opposed to when we used to get a lot of things through the mail, which already provided us a paper. And I guess there's still some of us that are still paper filers and haven't mastered the, the art of filing things electronically. So, but I, I agree, we should do more electronically.
John, do we lease any of the copiers or do we own them? Because I mean, is any of that cost for releasing equipment?
Yes, some of that cost is for lease. We actually had a reduction in our lease when we renewed last year of $4,000. We do have a current four-year lease that it runs through. We're just entering, we're just finishing year one, so, but another three years on that lease.
And I assume these are multi- channel printers and photocopiers?
Yes, that is correct.
So that has IT involved in it?
Yes.
Thank you.
John, I have a question for you. I first like to thank you for what you've done to continue to keep all of our meetings online. And I know it took a while in the beginning to get the technology in place, but thank you for doing that. It's really been working well and you and your department. I did look ahead in the finance packet and noticed that in April, we obviously purchased a bunch of computers because we have people working remote. I'm sure that was a, a need towards the COVID-19 process. I guess the question is, since we've done that in 1920, are we still going to continue the same replacement cycle in 2021 or have we jumped ahead a little bit?
No, we would continue that same replacement cycle. That covers barely 20% of our fleet as far as computers go. So we're already pushing out to a five, six-year replacement cycle on PCs.
Okay. And I, I attended one of the seminars we had in town talking about cyber issues related to IT. I, I know you've put a cut within the budget. I'd just like to hear a little bit about what you're cutting and what kind of exposure we have by doing so, because that seems to be a, a real sensitive area with technology now.
Sure. What I had originally proposed in the budget was a managed service. What that would do is take all of our current sources for, for, for information. For instance, our, our endpoint security systems, our switches, our firewalls, our network monitoring and give us correlation with a managed service. We're, we're a small shop. We, we just simply do not have the manpower to, to monitor every, you know, every single log file that comes through that, that we generate. That managed service would ingest all that information and give us actionable. data from that. So it would give us an overview of, hey, this is what's happening on the network. You need to look into this. It would also include remediation as well. So in the event of, you know, during, you know, during an incident, if it blows up to the point where we have, you know, nobody wants to say the B word, but if we had a breach, they would, you know, we would coordinate with them and help to use remediation from them. They would have our information and as well as the resources we would get through Karma and, you know, reporting to the FBI.
And how comfortable are you in today's world operating? I know it's a new service, but not adding that in?
It keeps you up at night.
Okay.
Thank you.
Hey, John, I just had a quick follow-up question and maybe Mona would or John Mayor would have a better idea. But other computers you had to buy, are any of those going to be reimbursed through the COVID and FEMA money perhaps?
No, not on those. That's part of our regular, you know, this is just the time of year when we happen to buy computers.
Okay.
Computers doesn't qualify under FEMA reimbursement for what the, the category that they designated reimbursable expenses.
I see. I think the ambulance are going to try to submit a couple because they did try to use that as outreach. So we're not sure if it'll be reimbursable, but they're suggesting that they, they try that.
Okay. Yeah, I saw that in the, in the packet for Thursday. Okay.
Hey, John. What I'm hearing is, just kind of getting back to the cyber thing again, just for a minute. What I'm hearing is that the number of incidences are, are kind of up tenfold. Are you, I know you, I know you do have, get some reports on, on hits on your system. Are you seeing an increase from what you are monitoring?
I've seen an increase in email attacks. We just made a change the other day to our firewall systems based upon some of the monitoring I was doing on our AGC spam devices. As far as the other noise that happens, there's, there's always people trying to take advantage. And the typical kind of a start of attack runs through email. You know, that's what they'll try and get some information. The other things that I do worry about are things like the HVAC systems and the IOT devices that are starting to creep up. Those we don't have as good of insight into because they are simply just unmanaged devices.
And you have a remote exposure now, not everybody in their remote work from home spaces is, and maybe as secure as it was when it was at town hall.
That is correct as well. You know, we do have VPN clients that, that help to protect us. But, you know, anytime we start to deal with an unmanaged device, there is that potential.
So, John, like in that training line item, is there, and I'm assuming we do some version of this. Do we do any kind of phishing exercises or training? Like you send the phishing emails out just to see like who would respond? I, I do those like in my, my work. I mean, people send them out, so I don't know if we do that at town hall.
That training item, line item is really towards IT training. I just sent a, a staff member in March, virtual classes now, so there's, IT's been great on that. So we do do virtual classes a lot of times. But we don't do any, any of the email campaigns. If we did, that would actually come out of the information services line because that would be conducted more of a service as opposed to something like a software.
Yeah, I was wondering like if there are like, you know, employee training which are arranged through. I mean, I don't know which line item it will go to. I was just assuming that there is a spend there somewhere, but I don't know. Like I, I think it's the worthwhile expenditure to a reasonable level, like, right? I mean, we have lots of line items right here. And I think just to train our employees to be more vigilant about these kind of attacks. I think that's a worth, what we spent. I don't know. This is more of a question for John Mayer, really. I mean, where that goes, but that just like this conversation, I think definitely is germane to that. And I, I think we should, we should, we should be having such a program just to whatever it takes.
Absolutely agree with you on that one. And as far as, you know, sending out those emails, that's something that I've certainly considered.
Hey, John, this is John Miller. Another quick question. Well, I'm not sure if it's quick, but along the same lines on what all the councils and councils are mentioning around cybersecurity and so forth. Looking at the, within lens of business continuity, disaster recovery. And with disaster recovery, there's different tearing associated to that, such as automated or manual retrieving data from backup, for example. Is there, what line items here have the bulk of that type of disaster recovery component? Is it multiple or is it all under the information technology services?
That would be all under the information technology services.
And percentage wise, is there, is the majority in the automated or manual or is that something that?
Percentage wise, the backup is automated. That happens every night. The recovery and testing is manual.
Thanks, John.
One, I have one quick question, John. Again, on the cybersecurity, do you, do you monitor the police department's security too on their systems?
Yes, I do.
Have they reported statistics to you in terms of phishing or attacks or anything like that? Or can you see it directly?
I can see all that directly.
Okay, so that, that's under your realm of information?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
I think along those lines, I understand what you're saying, how computers are not listed as being reimbursable under FEMA. But it seems to me at some level, there has to be some type of supplemental grant money for cybersecurity, especially when you're monitoring, you know, the emergency management side of a municipality. And I'm trying to Google that right now under FEMA while we're talking. I was hoping that there would be other questions.
I can, I can get a confirmation on it with our contact, so you don't have to Google it.
You know, we could put that.
All my crazy questions, so.
Yeah, I mean, if we could get that 15,000 covered by, you know, supplemental grant money. Because it is emergency preparedness, especially if it's working with our, you know, first.
As long as it was directly related. I know the ambulance, obviously there were directly related when they added them on. So I think it's, it makes a difference what's directly related.
Yeah, but even police and fire though.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Right.
As is John Mayer's office directly related, you know, and you, right? Because that's the whole finance department right there, so.
Yes.
Arguably.
I did have a question about that, the information technology services item. Last year we adopted almost $30,000. This year the request was 60, was being dropped 15, so, or almost 61, since being dropped 15. So given that we might be looking at potentially a 15,000 or 16,000 increase over last year, are we getting part of the way there or is that because other services went up? What is the, the increase in that line going to go to? Are there some projects that we're going to be able to tackle with that?
Yes, there are projects we're going to tackle with that. Our website is currently five years old on its last redesign. It's no longer functional as far as a modern web design. It's time for a change. A large portion of that is going towards communication, you know, the website. We're also looking at things like, you know, I know it's a, a, a big topic, you know, municipal app, things like that. So those are the types of things that we're actually looking at doing with that, that line item as well.
And are we able to prioritize? Actually, two-part question. Oh, the first one is that cybersecurity effort that we were talking about, that 15,000-ish. Is that bringing in like one-time consultants or is that like a new recurring line item?
That would be a new recurring line item.
Okay. And then the second is that would we be able to prioritize potentially the cybersecurity piece over the website piece if we had to? Or is the, what are your thoughts on that? I guess if we had to weigh one or the other, depending on how these alternate funding sources might may or may not turn out.
I would like to prioritize cybersecurity first. You know, it, it's a question of weighing out what works and what doesn't as far as what the community sees versus what we see internally. I can go, given my technical nature, obviously I'd love to just say cybersecurity, let's go for it. There, you know, if there's grant money to be available, I'll certainly start looking for it, especially in relation to the like, you know, emergency operation centers and things like that.
I think I shared the, I think probably a lot of folks shared the thoughts about the website. It's functional, but you kind of have to know where stuff is before you go looking for it. And a municipal app would be, would be great too, especially as we're looking to connect with people remotely. But knowing what the risks might be for cybersecurity, potentially something we might want to look at. I mean, you probably know that better than, better than us, but something to consider there if, you know, we have to go in that direction.
Yeah, if I may comment on that. The, the website is, you know, website, municipal app, those are more along the lines of one-time kind of redesigns, whereas the cybersecurity is a recurring item. So putting that off, we just see an increase next year or the year after with, with, in regards to the website redesign. Once we commit to that cybersecurity, it is something that needs to stay.
All right, if there aren't any more questions of IT, John, thank you. We will move forward to human services.
Do you want me to give a rundown, Lisa, of the department?
I'm trying to find your page in the red book.
Page 68.
Thank you. Should have pre-marked them. Sure, would you like to do that, Melissa? Or, you know, just maybe just go what's on your resolution or whatever you prefer.
Okay, so all my pages, the four separate pages sort of break down just for new council members who may or may not be aware, human services is an umbrella department. So we're broken down by youth services, which is run by Lori Stancic. We are broken down by transportation department and the senior center under the, the umbrella of human services. So we all sort of try to cross-train and be familiar with all aspects because as we take in clients and residents, we make a habit of sort of taking an intake approach and using all aspects of the department to help facilitate change and help. So my budget is pretty flat. I did put in for an increase with one of, under the human services page on 68. I had put in a little bit of a increase to make one of our part-time support services assistant, a 30-hour position. But due to my 2% cut, we have pulled that back again to 19 hours. Other than that, I have no real increases in my budget this year.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions, comments?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start off with a question. Missy, um, yeah, I understand about the cuts and everything and the conference, this, this whole meeting should revolve around responsible cutting. What are your thoughts on in the senior center and assistant to Denise? Because I've been hearing a lot of pros and cons and the, and the growth of the senior center and the programs and activities. And in some ways it could be overwhelming. What are your thoughts on that?
To be very honest with you, I think it's going to be essential, but I think looking at it, like everybody has said, and it's true for all of us, sort of projecting what this is going to look like. I mean, we're up specifically with the senior center up against the expansion, the construction, as well as the most vulnerable population during this COVID and probably the latest or last phase of re-implementation into society. So I, I think once we get over those hurdles and the amount of space that we will have to offer sort of increased programming, I think we will definitely see absolutely an increase with not only our seniors that were there, but hopefully with the younger seniors coming in. And sort of that's a lot of what our design was targeted at. Therefore, I think it will be imperative, I think by next year's budget to take a look at it. I think this year, because overall, like many of the departments, we have sort of hyper-focused on what the imminent needs are. And so it's allowing specifically Denise some time this summer to really take a look at breaking down some of what we would like to do with programming, seeing as though the senior center is closed and for the foreseeable future, certainly very limited anyway. So I, my thoughts are, I think it's going to be imperative if all goes as we hope it will. But it's very hard to look at that right now in this moment because that's the population that is sort of, needs our most attention and services right now.
But I think to your point, and it's a very good point, a year from now, it should be on the table for discussion because we'll be looking at the end of the projects, hopefully, you know, sometime next year. In regards to your other comment about since the senior center is closed, there hasn't been activities. Are you seeing any savings in not paying people to do classes or anything like that?
Well, we, to be honest with you, a lot of the classes that were taking place, a lot of like the chair yoga and the exercise classes were paid by residents, so we have refunded that money. Is there some savings? Yeah, a little bit. However, like I know all of my peers here in town and their budgets, it's, the funds are being reallocated. So for instance, we are not, we don't have the nurses coming in right now, and we certainly don't have the wood carver and, and the serenators. So those are relatively minuscule amounts.
I was going to say it's pretty minor.
It's pretty minor. We're obviously not serving lunch right now, but lunch is supplemented. So that line item doesn't completely cover that. So there's not a big savings there and, and on in other aspects of human services, the amount of groceries that we're having to purchase right now to deliver to seniors at home is utilizing that, that extra. We are definitely seeing donations and we do have a great community who has stepped up and helped send in donations. But the price of food to order online is astronomical right now. We're paying almost double for staple items that we would have been paying a couple of months ago. So it shifted, but we're not really seeing savings per se.
Now, that's a good point. Have you produced a wish list of things that you need?
Yes.
Is it online?
It is. Yep, Nicole did an Amazon wishlist, which we've put out. We, and we've received, now that we're getting some checks in, she works diligently almost every day. But, you know, we have to beg Peter to pay Paul even with some when ordering because you can only, a lot of these places are limiting the number of items you can order or they're back, you know, ordered and it takes weeks to get in. So we are managing, we're supplementing things, we are pre-packing bags and we're offering everything from paper products and cleaning supplies to a bag full of, you know, food and balancing it the best we can with non-perishables. But I mean, it's, it's no easy task ordering through these delivery services and having one staff at a time, sometimes two, to help unload the boxes. They have to be inventoried and gotten to finance, poor finance. at a time, sometimes two, to help unload the boxes. They have to be inventoried and get, gotten to finance, poor finance, keeping up with us and our credit card. So, you know, like everybody's doing the best we can. So long, very long answer to your question, but, um, not, we're not seeing significant savings because of the other programs. We are really having to do the best we can to meet a lot of needs of seniors and residents. The other thing for my budget specific, which I think for some of the other departments, as they look at more normalizing, things will get, um, you know, back to their baseline. But for us, we're looking at the snowball effect, because certainly the unemployment rate is going to be, this is not a short fix. So the vast number of unemployed people, as well as, um, throughout the summer, I know the governor put into place to, you know, freeze evictions or whatnot, but that's all going to catch up. And so for human services, we're looking at probably more of a two-year plan to get caught up with the financial downside that, that is occurring right now from unemployment.
Okay. And, and my last question on, um, on the minibus.
Sure.
Are there, or has transportation been down?
Oh, certainly. Yeah, we are providing, um, we have.
There gonna be savings in part-time salaries?
Uh, well, part-time salaries, we don't really, yeah, we are. Um, that was the other area that I cut a little bit for next year. Um, to sort of make up the difference was some of the get out of the kitchen. Um, that was a part-time driver more in the summertime for weekends and evenings. Now, I have to tell you though, as things open up, it certainly isn't going to happen in the next couple of months, because we're following guidelines and safety of our seniors is, is absolutely our focus and most important. But that would be one area, especially as the construction is going on and programs are limited that we would like to be able to offer to the seniors is to help get them out into the community or out to some of Craig's activities at Parks and Rec, maybe if they're not driving. So, um, we will see some savings, but currently right now, um, it's our full-time drivers during the day, which is where we're not seeing as many rides. We're doing grocery stores, medical appointments if they go. And like the bank or anything, just, but mostly grocery stores right now, but that would be our full-time drivers anyway. So that's not helping save us financially right now.
Thanks a bunch. Appreciate it.
Melissa, I, I hope you're not waiting, you're not waiting in the line at Webster, the, the, the bank window at Webster?
Is it? I heard it's horrible, right? All the banks.
Hour away, and I don't care what day you go there.
It's awful. Yeah.
You pick my interest on the unemployment. Do you, are you getting, do you have projections? Are you, are you, you have numbers, say, on the town of Rocky Hill, what you think the unemployed rate is in Rocky Hill?
No, we don't, we don't get those specific numbers yet. They're very delayed. Um, I certainly am communicating with my peers in other towns. None of us have exact numbers. We are right now going off the statistics provided by the governor and certainly federal statistics. And I know they're, you know, the highest that they've been in a long, long time, if ever. Um, so, and, and basically we're, we're basing it off the requests we're getting right now. We're in, like I said, we're in a temporary sort of hold pattern, because utilities cannot be shut off, people cannot be evicted right now. But we are doing our best to anticipate, you know, what's going to happen once all those things lift. And we're talking three or four months and from that point going forward.
Do, do you have some sort of registration list where people are beginning to sign up and you're seeing more? Maybe say, um, homeowners signing up?
Um, we don't have a list per se, because everybody is protected right now. So we're encouraging people to, you know, we certainly are doing a, a lot of education in giving people resources, unemployment, um, contacts online. I know, um, when anybody calls, we're giving them information on the phone and in their food bags, on the rules, the regulations for our renters. You know, we are getting a lot of panicked phone calls. And so we're doing a lot of just education in that sense right now on what their rights are and the fact that it's not imminent. But certainly, um, utilizing their stimulus checks to perhaps put that aside. If they are a renter and they're falling behind, they're going to need to catch up. There's a lot of misconceptions out there about, um, rent forgiveness. This is not a rent forgiveness. This is simply, you know, giving you a little extra time, but that rent is still going to be due. And so that's sort of a little of what we're bracing for. And once we get past the having to purchase the, the food primarily right now, then we're going to really take a look at where we're at with a lot of the donations and try to project out and figure out what, what we can do as they start to trickle in or flood in, which I anticipate.
Thank you.
Sure.
I'm Melissa Jumler.
Hi, John.
The correlation with everything that's just been said to the line item around tenant evictions. You know, maybe protection, projections around that?
Well, I'll tell you, we sort of, that is one of those, you have no idea. It could be a busy year. And the last couple of years, we've been relatively lucky and have not had that. But, you know, this year I anticipate we're gonna probably two or three times that amount. Um, there is really no way to know. Typically going into the springtime is when we start to see, um, an increase in that. And, and that's not because the winter shut off. So a lot of people have winter protection programs. So right in the springtime is that comes off and, and snowball effect from, um, winter bills building up is when we see evictions. Certainly that is on hold right now. So all we can do is inform people of sort of the programs that have been put into place and brace ourselves for what will come after, because it's really and truly no way to know. I mean, all we just keep hearing is the unemployment rate and, you know, so we are reaching out with, with every program and really trying to encourage those who are getting unemployment with the increased amount, they're getting food stamp, um, increases and the stimulus check to really utilize that as the best they can and be good with budgeting and money management, because that's going to be imperative for people who are struggling. But there is no way to answer your question. I have no way of knowing. I anticipate, um, that we are going to use all of that, if not much more than that, because it's a state mandate. So that is what it is and it has to be done. But there is no way really to predict other than what everybody knows from the numbers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I hate to ask this, it's kind of a small amount, but, um, the meeting expense, mileage we had out of town, meetings and seminars, has, has that been canceled for the year? Or is that something that's still maybe next spray or planning?
Are you looking at, um, youth services page?
I am, yes, thanks. Shouldn't have given that to you first.
No, that's okay. So, um, that's Lori's page. She utilizes that, that's mileage reimbursement. Um, she has been, we have looked at that as, um, and she has been asked to utilize town fleet cars, um, which is a little bit more challenging for us, but it can be done certainly when it's planned. The other thing she hosts, um, so a lot of what Lori does in youth services is also state mandated with prevention. So she is, has a very tight-knit group and they rotate and have meetings, um, and she hosts them here in our space sometimes. So, um, that's where that comes from. And so much of her money is mat, is grant matched. Um, so some of that can be scaled back. She has been asked to, um, utilize, you know, not utilize gas mileage or whatnot, but it's, it's minor in comparison with the budget.
Um, and, uh, the minibus, you mentioned the hours are down, so that cut, um, is it accurate to say that it wouldn't impact services?
Um, no, the, the, the small cut that I made, um, was some of the part-time line item, which would pay a per-diaem driver on nights and weekends to do the, where it's called get out of the kitchen. They all go to a restaurant and have dinner out for those seniors that don't drive. Um, it would have also have been if a senior wanted to go to a town council meeting or, uh, a Saturday, which we've gotten requests for. So obviously without a lot of people around, um, I think it's safe to say until further notice that won't be taking place. So we can save some of that. But our regular full-time, uh, Monday through Friday program is full-time drivers. And so we're saving a little bit in gas, because certainly we're not running two buses every day. Um, and the other program is a grant-funded program that takes people out and we're still utilizing that as well. So that's no cost to us.
And then, um, I totally, when you mentioned the ordering through Amazon, I mean, uh, there are people who are price gouging like crazy. It's really gross. So I, I totally understand what we're facing there. Um, have we tried, um, reaching out to any of our restaurants? Do you use their suppliers, uh, or maybe purchasing in bulk, something that wasn't Amazon or online? I don't know if anybody in the local community could help us make those types of connections that might get us a better price for some of those?
So we have a really good working relationship with Chris from West Side. They've always, I'm there all over the community. Um, he has certainly helped, made donations and, and been able to get us things that we needed. The problem is we're, we're not, um, we're relatively limited on, because it's, we're pre-packing bags now and they're non-perishable. So we're looking at peanut butter, jelly, things that, you know, that all the stores are struggling to get as well. And so, um, when we have reached out, some of the responses we're getting understandably is that some of these items, and I saw it myself, again, even just this weekend, it's, it feels like every week you go one around local stores and it's a different aisle that's completely empty. So if it's not flour, it's pasta or it's rice or, and a lot of those things are things that we're trying to provide. Um, so we haven't had much luck utilizing other suppliers. We really don't have the capacity or the space. What was it? Somebody's yelling for me, sorry. I think it's PD yelling at me. Um, so we, therefore that's, it's been difficult, but our local town people have helped us in, uh, in getting some supplies and paper towels. We got toilet paper, we got, which was like a goldmine. So we were able to hand that out. Um, uh, other than that, though, we're, we are making do. It's just, it's a constant, you know, every day, get on, order what you can, inventory, pack what you can and substitute. Uh, my staff has done a fantastic job. We have a, a daily email that goes out so that we're keeping track of everything and people in need. And so that's what I can tell you.
And, and if there's anybody, um, or for those folks who are home watching as we near hour three, if people want to help, um, what can they do to help out the food pantry or youth services?
Honestly, um, what we have asked everybody to do is certainly monetary donations, whether that be in the form of, um, money, a check or certainly a check or gift cards to grocery stores, so local, um, grocery stores. And like I said, this is an ongoing, um, we're certainly going to be facing this for, for a good amount of time to help get people back on their feet. So, um, any, even things like Walmart for diapers and, um, things that they, people cannot purchase with food stamps. And also we're encouraging local restaurants. So keeping our local businesses, um, if you are willing or can or like to buy a voucher to any of the local restaurants here in town that are doing takeout. Um, I know it's a nice needed break for some of our families and moms that have little ones all day long. And, uh, that's a lot. And just to get out or be able to do takeout is, is, you know, kills two birds with one stone. So that's what we're asking and people really have stepped up and it's working and people are appreciating it. And so far we are hundred percent, as far as I know, meeting the needs of anybody who has called and asked, we have made it happen. So including driving all over Timbuktu, looking for soap and hand sanitizer and cleaning supplies on the shelves. So, but so far so good.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Um, Missy, I guess I'll ask the question. I mean, we've, we've had the opportunity on the senior liaison, um, video call to talk about what you've been doing and, and thank you for what, what all the departments are doing, but as you're helping. Um, but one of the things you mentioned earlier in the call is you're, the senior group is our most vulnerable. As of the governor's orders for, I think, May twentieth, uh, those sixty-five and older are still recommended to continue to maintain social distancing and, um, really not getting out in public, not going to the restaurants and haircuts, et cetera, et cetera.
Right.
But the question I guess I'm getting to in the long way, um, is going forward, do we, do you anticipate senior activities to pick up at some point before a vaccine or medication comes out or for that most vulnerable group? Is the feeling that this may be even longer?
Um, I can speak to my own opinion and certainly my, the opinion of many of the other senior center coordinators and directors of human services in, in the state, um, and nationwide. But I would have to say I'm leaning toward more implementation of online programs um, and very limited programs. So I don't, I, I think, I think down the road certainly with a beautiful center, certainly, I, I don't want this to be misconstrued to say we're not going to have programs or that won't be a thing. But I think that this population is just so vulnerable. And as this evolves with even, you know, non-symptomatic carriers, now they're worried about or whatnot. This is something that very much like many other illnesses, until there's a reliable, solid vaccination for this, where people, specifically seniors, can feel um, secure, because many seniors live with other family members or another senior. And therefore, um, you know, it's, it's so devastating to that population right now um, that I, I can't in all good conscience and say that I think that things will return to any semblance of normal for that population for quite some time. I just don't, I think we're going to have to work very hard to figure out how to get them involved and get them active and continue to help socialize them and, and enhance their lifestyles in a very different way that many of our seniors are not used to doing, being not technically, technical savvy and other challenges for them.
Sure. And I guess where I'm going with it is from a budget standpoint, and I'm not looking total dollars.
Yeah.
Potentially like having to shift line items to help support different activities than what we're planning for right now?
Yeah, absolutely. I think with this, we have to absolutely be prepared for that and, and keep that in mind. As opportunities creep up, we may have to jump on an opportunity that may be, even, even things that, such as mailing, Alan, you know, like a lot of our seniors don't have, uh, computers in the home. So some of that, and, and I've heard some of the conversations and agree with a lot of things going technical or, you know, emails and all kinds of things. But for some of our seniors for the next year or two, even, I, I wasn't thinking that when I did the budget about the cost of mailings monthly to a senior population in town. But that's a good example of something that we may have to shift from another line item to help fund, because that may be a significant difference in, in what we have to do to get through the summer for them.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I know this is a budget-oriented workshop, but it's a large population of our community. And we want to make sure that they're aware, we're not forgetting them.
Absolutely not.
Include them within the budget process.
Oh, absolutely not. No, I, I can guarantee you, if anything, we are looking to whatever we can skim and put toward that is, is really what our focus is right now. Because I, I am most concerned, I'm concerned about everybody in a lot of different ways. But I am most concerned about the isolation factor and the loneliness and the fear and all of those things. We are working really hard to address, um, those issues and that is senior focus. So if anything, they are the most on our minds, the most we're concerned about, and certainly the most that we're looking to do what we can for in the near future.
Just kind of following up on, on that, just think it occurred to me, um, I think for a lot of seniors, their, their computer was at the library, which is unfortunately closed as well. Do we have, I know we don't have an abundance of storage, but you know, thinking about maybe some of the larger corporate partners in town where, you know, they recycle, um, just like what IT John was mentioning, you know, you go through your, your laptop program where they swap out their machines every three or four years. Sometimes they, you know, send the other ones out to be inventoried or wholesale. I don't know if we have any of those types of machines available for certain seniors who may not have access or be able to afford a computer or taking donations in. I mean, it becomes a, a pain to support, I'm sure. But, um, is, if someone has a, an old laptop or a computer or an iPad, they're looking to donate, can, can they, uh, you know, give that to human services to get it to a senior who might not have it? Do you have any thoughts about, um, that type of, um, program?
Um, I have had a few thoughts. There's just, um, some other towns as well that are, are talking about, we're all collaboratively in a meeting talking about, um, starting a lend program, like a laptop lending program, I think is what you're referring to or similar. That certainly would need to be discussed with IT and the town manager, because I'm not sure about liabilities with wiping them clean and who installs them. And they're obviously, you know, there's a lot of logistics involved in getting, you know, wifi and services. in getting, you know, wifi and services into these homes or whatnot. But certainly, um, I think it's a great idea. And I think definitely along the lines of what we've been talking about, it's, it's something we have to take a look at, because I think that's going to be important and necessary.
Thanks.
Mistia there, um, volunteer opportunities for people. I know you mentioned about seniors feeling isolated. I'm having, uh, phone calls. Do you have enough people to make calls, uh, to seniors? Cause I find a few of the people that I know, and I'm, I am a senior, but I have older seniors that, that are just friends of mine. And I just give a, we chat and they'll chat for twenty.
Um, a few weeks back, when all this started, the library really stepped up. Uh, Mary Hogan had some of her staff that, you know, with the library closed, had time on their hands. We made lists, um, and started reaching out to seniors that we, um, we knew that we had service in whatever capacity, um, asking if they wanted to volunteer. We did hook up and we also maintained a list of volunteers, which were people in the community that called, um, and sort of on the phone when we did a makeshift intake, sort of what they were comfortable doing. Some were comfortable going out grocery shopping. Some were just comfortable making calls, but we certainly have paired up. People with, um, calls, other times there's, there's some senior specific that we have serviced here for years that we talk to on the phone almost daily and check in with. But, um, to answer your question, Mimi, absolutely. Uh, we are doing that. We are pairing people up. At this point, um, we had a really long list of volunteers and we were able to match everybody who needed that. But certainly, uh, we always put out there to anybody that if they are in need of, of a call or a pen pal or any, any sort of somebody just to check in with them on a regular basis. Um, it amazes even me to see how many people, which is, is a good thing, but how many even neighbors are just working out with light switches and turn the light on or off in the morning. I know you're okay. And just really taking care of their neighbors. So that need has not been as much as we anticipated initially, but it is happening. And, uh, we do have enough volunteers at this point, but I have a list of them and I tell all my volunteers, I could call you any minute. So.
And, and if people have needs themselves, they should call you.
Absolutely. They should. Whatever need they have, we will work our, our best to pair them up with that. Whether it be, you know, groceries, cleaning supplies, help with bills. Um, sometimes just somebody to talk to if they're anxious, um, suggestions we've done on the phone. We've had some seniors call and just ask what they can be doing or, you know, just want to chit chat. Um, if they're looking for a volunteer, any of those things. I mean, it's, it's a day by day, because we're all figuring this out. So we certainly are as well, but we're managing so far. So anybody who has any needs should certainly call us. And if we can't help, we'll find somebody that will.
Thank you.
Yep.
Melissa, do you have, uh, any idea of how many people that you could or would potentially need to service if you could with some type of electronic device?
Um, well, I would have to say Lisa, I don't know how I would give those specific numbers, but I mean, if we're looking at, we're looking at what? I think our numbers are about eight thousand seniors in town. Is that correct? Based on our numbers we typically talk about, right?
Well, yeah, I thought it was like maybe seven, but eight. Yeah.
Seven or eight. I think we typically talk about seniors being about forty percent of the population. We go about twenty thousand, right? So seventy-five, call it maybe, right?
Is that at age fifty-five? Is that where we're?
Why? We always go by sixty. I know some programs go by fifty-five, we go by sixty.
So let's say age sixty and presumably not all of them would need.
No, certainly not. But I'm starting with that number. I'm saying, I mean, even if we looked at ten percent of that, we'd be looking at seventy, you know, I, or, yeah, I mean, I would say a hundred would be a good. I, I mean, because a lot of those, a lot of those seniors have spouses in the home or children around that can, or are already established with computers. Um, and some of those realistically that don't and have never had a computer aren't going to be comfortable borrowing one anyway, because they have, you know, no ability or need or desire to use one. It would be nice if we could do some sort of a virtual or online class and, and help alleviate some of the anxiety around that. Um, but I would say shooting for a hundred and maybe seeing what the response is and then getting a list going. If we could get into a program and I'm certainly going to look, um, the state is starting to talk about waves of grants and things that they're going to help provide. But, but like everybody, they're still dealing with imminent needs, um, protective gear and whatnot. So as that comes along, we'll certainly be looking into what we can acquire around, around that and see what we can do for them. But I would say a hundred would be a good start. I mean, it would be very difficult to, and again, John, I can't see you, but I know you're on here. So IT is gonna have to help facilitate some of the, making sure it's wiped clean and other things that are involved. So I wouldn't want to take on too much that realistically we couldn't handle.
Yeah, I guess I was thinking not so much on the temporary side of distribution, but more sort of like, you know, with DPH giving the nursing homes iPads for their residents. That's a permanent.
Right.
Delivery.
Right.
I'm just wondering if maybe like, you know, the commission on women, children and seniors have started giving this any thought, but more for like the, you know, not, I know that we're talking our vulnerable population, but within that population, you know, for maybe members who may.
Right.
All right. Are there any other, uh, comments or questions for Melissa? Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Uh, last but not least, we're moving to library. Hi, Mary.
Hi, everyone. So our budget, as you can see, was, um, pretty much flat. And then we're proposing to cut back, back down on our part-time people to get to that two percent.
How many people is that?
I'm sorry, what was that question?
You said people as in plural. I'm just curious with it. How, how many?
Oh, oh, well, it's part-time, so it's really hours that we're cutting back on. So it would be the number of hours.
So Mary, you would shut the library down on Sunday?
That, that's what I would project. I mean, it's still up in the air about, um, what we need, what we'll do, but it could be the Sundays.
And what are the hours now on a Sunday?
Twelve, two, four, and it's October through April.
Mary, would it, would it, have you, why Sunday? Are there other days that could substitute for the Sunday?
Sunday's the lowest number of people that we have, but I, I'd be open to look at some other things. But Sunday is where we all have part-timers and then we try to, so that's where I'd cut the part-time budget. And it's the lowest foot traffic of the day of the week.
In, in looking at the upcoming year, um, any thought about changing, I guess, um, less physical books and more online stuff? What are your, what are your plans for, uh, like everybody else? Like how are we adapting to this?
So we've swi- shifted a little bit and ordered more electronic. Um, some publishers have come forward for this period of time that we could really increase our electronic. But it will be, um, people will stay electronic and we, we will do a little bit more shifting. But people still want the books to hold in their hands. Uh, so it's, it's hard to, uh, say. But the electronic books are more expensive for libraries. So it's kind of, it's been tough to balance the bestsellers.
Hey, Mary, this is John. Um, considering the savings around part-time salaries, um, aren't there some additional correlations based on remaining line item, line items that can offer some savings as well?
Uh, so are, are you saying for this year or for next year?
For, uh, for, for this year and next year.
Oh, for this year, I mean, we'll, we'll save some on the part-time salaries, but pretty much all the others, I mean, well, we're on track of spending. I mean, there's some business expenses and postage, but it's so minor, um, that, that we won't spend. But, uh, we're pretty much on track, uh, with the, but, with a decrease in the part-time salaries for, um, this year.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Uh, Mary, I guess the general question, I mean, times have definitely changed very rapidly, honest. How do you see library services coming back when we can start going back to a more normal routine?
So I'm working with the four towns in the same, the health district, and we're meeting and discussing that. But we're, um, going to start with curbside service and then we'll slowly work on reopening. But I really see virtual services as a big part and we went strong on virtual programming in April and May. And we've gotten a lot of people to participate. So I really don't see us bringing back people to the library for programs that we, well, we used to have our meeting room every night of the week with programs. We've shifted that to virtual and I think we'll stay with that, with the, the early literacy programs, the adult enrichment, um, and all that. I really see until we get a vaccine or other indicators, it will be virtual.
And the, I guess the other piece of that is I understand that, um, you know, your wifi system is on. And, you know, I've heard comments from people that there's people sitting in your parking lot on their laptop or tablet, literally connecting to wifi because they may not have it at home.
Right. We, we've, um, put out signs up in all our windows with the wifi information on how to do it. We've been answering, we do a lot of tech calls. We've been helping people get up to date with their tech. We've been helping people practice on Zoom. They might've had an interview, but, um, we've let people know about our wifi. It's a key service.
Thank you.
All right. Any other, uh, questions or comments for the library?
Just that we always look forward to the library's presentation usually. Sorry that it has to be so truncated.
Yeah. Well, I, I just want to say, I know that we are all, um, on the council very thankful for your assistance and, and trying to help us minimize the impact of this budget on the taxpayers and, and still deliver your quality services, uh, during tremendously uncertain times. Um, so I, I hope that you understand how truly appreciative we are. We understand it's a lot of difficult choices. Um, and it's not easy, uh, for any of the departments. It's not easy on the council side to even have to contemplate these types of, um, changes. And, and, uh, but we are all learning to adapt. And unfortunately, um, you know, as long as we stay in this pandemic situation, and I, one of the counselors mentioned, I don't know who it was, but you know, we really do have a, a two-year focus with this particular budget. And we can't live just within, um, you know, the, the budget that we're working on now. We really need to contemplate where are we going to be in terms of not just the virus, but the economy for the next budget. And so all the decisions we're making today really, um, you know, they're not just for now, they're, they're for the future. And so, uh, that's a big concern for us. And so again, we appreciate you helping us uh, try to understand what that future looks like.
Well, before we go, uh, can I ask a couple of questions, uh, of, uh, John, John Mayer? Uh, if, if I may, just, uh, they, they fit in like a general category. And that's why I thought like they would be most appropriate for John Robley. So John, like the first question is the revenue side, we looked at a lot of our like, you know, spending side expenditure side. On the revenue side, what are your projections on not just the tax collections, but also on other revenue items like permits and things like that, which I'm sure like they're smaller, but they add up. Uh, so where do you see that going in the next twelve months, maybe six to twelve months? I don't know. So I, I would love to know, because that is a big, and if we are making any contingency plans, if those revenue projections don't pan out?
Well, we're going along that we're going to assume that we're going to get all our state money that was in the February proposal from the governor. Uh, we're establishing the grant, grand list and whatever the mill rate is, that's determined to cover the expenditures. Um, we would have to see how the payments start coming in, um, through September because of the extra sixty days. And then probably seeing what the revenue looks like through the end of December. Uh, and then see how it compares to our budgeted numbers, uh, for revenues. And then at that point in time, um, we would probably have to make a decision on whether we have a shortfall and we have to make some adjustments in our expenditure side. Or, um, maybe things will turn out better than we anticipate and we can continue along with the way the, uh, the budget is put together. But I would say as of right now, uh, there's too many things up in the air to, uh, see what the true revenue picture looks like in the first three and six months before you have to make any, uh, adjustments on the expenditure side.
Okay. So I think, so you, 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 we do have a plan B in some way, shape or form. Uh, whether we talk about, or you want to talk about it right now publicly or not, but I'm sure like it keeps you awake, right?
Yes, it does.
Okay. So no, that's what I was trying to get at, because I'm sure like all these, all these expenditures are, are pretty good. Um, you know, but trying to cut those and get to like a certain number. But then if the other side of the equation doesn't pan out, like that definitely worries me. And I'm sure like it does way more what are you than it does me. So, uh, you know, that, that's one. And the second question I had was on, again, this is the same question I asked, uh, Dr. Zito on the Board of Ed's side, um, which is, which is more about on the salary side of things generally, right? Which is, uh, how much of our salary increases as a percentage are contractual versus discretionary, if you will? However, you break that bucket, union, non-union, things like that.
Right now, we have four union contracts that are in place going into July 1st of 2020. And then we have two other contracts that expire on June 30th that need to be negotiated. So only four contractual ones we have in place. And then the non-bargaining ones are, based on, um, are my meeting with the department heads. So generally we have police, the highway parks department maintainers, the, um, MEIU supervisors and, uh, the custodians that we are contractually locked into based on a, a, a union contract.
Right. Uh, what, what about the other side?
Is significantly smaller than the Board of Ed's.
Do, do we?
Two hundred teachers.
Sure. Like, yeah. So that I'm considering that's on the Board of Ed's side. On the town side, I was wondering if we, we, we have quantified those numbers, uh, somewhere like, uh, I mean, yeah.
We, we did qualify them. I think they're, uh, based on the union contracts that are in place. It's about two hundred and seventy thousand.
Right. If, if you look back, I was going to say to the town manager's presentation, he had, um, four hundred and fifty-six thousand that was mentioned for budget increases. And as he just says, there's for current year contracts, two hundred and seventy thousand. Uh, of that four fifty-six, you had a portion of it was because of the highway department had to settle a contract during the year. So you had about another forty, roughly forty thousand that was settling a contract. So you're looking at there two seventy for next year's contracts that are already settled. About another forty thousand because of a prior year contract, uh, that had to be covered from the adopted budget and to cover into next year. And also any non-bargaining increases as well.
Yeah. What about the non-disc, uh, what about the non-union side of things? Mona?
There's no, uh, no increase in this budget for that.
Nothing.
If they can get an increase, it'd be in a transfer from contingency.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thanks, John.
I'm sorry, I got thrown out, uh, by my internet. So I'm just catching up. I missed all of your questions, Pankage. So I apologize. Um, I think, John, did you, were you talking about the last two sections of the resolution, or did you just have specific questions? Because I think, John Mayer, we need to review those last two sections on the resolution.
Okay. The employee benefit group insurance is a reduction of benefits due to the cutting of the new police position. The employee benefits, OPEC contribution is the yearly contribution that we make to our OPEP trust relating to post-employment benefits and so on. In the past years, it's been around two hundred thousand a year. We budgeted a hundred and fifty, but we're cutting it down to fifty thousand. And then we're deferring to capital improvement programs that Phil started wanted is replacing the roof at fire station number three in sections, and the other one is the library window replacement program. So we're cutting those out of this year's budget and doing it in a future year.
Didn't we fund at least a portion of the, of the library, I mean, library, the, the firehouse roof? Could you explain how that worked again?
We did. I, I think Phil was going to do it over a three installment period. So we did do part of the roof this year out of the, this current year CIP. And he's been replacing the roof windows at the library over a number of years going around the building. So we had money budgeted for it in past years in the CIP.
And there's no, by not doing it this year, there's like a risk of future damage or deterioration like that?
If I could add, we can, I've in March, there was the leak in that particular roof section. There's three sections. One was the fire bay, ambulance bay, and then the upper meeting room roof. So yes, this past March, I just spent twelve hundred dollars on a, on a repair. It's going to happen again because it's, you know, the condition of the roof, it's over twenty-two, twenty-three years old. It's hit or miss, you know, I can, I can tell you this, it's probably leaking now, it's just not reaching the ground, not reaching the floor. But, you know, it is what it is. It's, it, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go past this year for sure. Because then now you're gonna, you're going to create more damage down below.
Phil, Phil, just following up on that. Are you updating that consultant report? Didn't we get a, we got a consultant report two years ago, John, about the facilities? Is that being incorporated into like facility due?
Yes, it, it made, it made the
Skip the year. How does that impact facility due, the results?
Well, everything's going to move up a year. That's basically
Are we still on track for following that, those recommendations from the consultant?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Any other comments or questions? So, John Mayer, this resolution is something that we can contemplate now as we mull over the proposed budget and, and our next meeting actually vote on it?
Tomorrow night?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are we meeting Thursday as well?
Any, any adjustments to be made or leave it as is type of thing, or? Or are they looking, people looking to add more things to it, or?
Well, actually, can I, can I just ask for clarification? Is this supposed to be the final recommendation for budget to budget, or is this just the first phase, and then there's additional cuts that we would recommend and vote on?
Well, this is the departments cutting their budgets by two percent.
Right, so we could, so theoretically, we could, theoretically, we could approve this.
You could do whatever you'd like as far as cuts, adds, et cetera.
Right, okay. All right, thanks.
John, just to clarify, I think there's a few departments that we're going to look into a couple of items and get back to us as well.
Okay.
I know Jim was going to take a look at some parts, whether, you know, we, I know tomorrow's a real quick turnaround to kind of take a look if we could put things in inventory. But if we can cut a little here and there, it does add up in a, in a difficult year.
Okay, those departments that are supposed to look up things, they know who they are?
I've already contacted Joe Lantini and asked him to do it tomorrow. So I don't know if I'll get an answer as to whether or not we can expend this year's funds to offset next year's budget. I don't know if I'll have an answer by tomorrow.
I think we have Thursday as well, and maybe it's better just to wait until our next, until the Thursday instead of pushing this for tomorrow.
So this resolution, given that we can potentially add in other cuts or add money back, I guess, depending on what people's thoughts are, what is this resolution accomplish?
It's a listing of cuts on one sheet of paper so that the council could accept the bottom-line number and vote on it basically once as opposed to going through a hundred pages of line items and cutting a few thousand dollars here and there to end up making in a mill rate cut. So it's for simplification, I think.
So instead of, instead of doing a thing where we make the motion, turn the page, propose the cuts, the idea is that we would get all of the adjustments onto one resolution that we would approve that would modify the proposed budget?
It's, it's the departments making recommendations on where a cut could be made.
I think it's limited to that.
Doing the turn the page thing, that was sort of tonight, going through the major departments budgets and so on. And again, we're trying to get to an adopted budget resolution for Monday night. So we need to know what the expenditures are going to be so that we can calculate the appropriate mill rate.
John, I guess the question comes up in, I, I don't know if I directly to you or should be a fellow counselors, do we need to have a meeting tomorrow night, or should we cancel tomorrow and do the meeting Thursday when giving the town departments time to come back?
I think that's directed towards the council, whether you want to come back and do everything tomorrow night, or I would assume there'd be some other cuts that you're thinking of as well. That's probably not on this list. If you want to wait until Thursday, that, that's fine. And I guess you would request certain departments to attend that meeting?
Or they could communicate back to you if there was ability to make additional cuts, is my opinion.
Yes, you could do it on Thursday as well.
Alan, I just want to make sure that we're not scrambling, because I agree with you. I, I I'd rather, I mean, from my perspective, I'd rather do it Thursday after all the information's in. I just don't want, I want to be sure that we're all on the same page with regards to this document and the way we've done it in the past, because this is new. We've usually worked behind the scenes to come up with recommendations and vet them out with department heads. So I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page with expectations for Thursday. Because I just want to make sure there's transparency out there. You know, this is a document that was sent to us to look over. We've heard from the department heads. And I'm sure we all have different opinions about what additional cuts or revenues at add-ons need to be made. I just want to make sure that it, it's a very transparent package.
Just remember, the council doesn't have, based on the charter, any say on the revenue side except establishing what the expenditure is going to be, and then we'll set the appropriate mill rate to cover those expenditures based on the town manager's revenue forecast.
Yeah, I didn't mean to step on your foot, John. Forget the revenue.
I actually thought you meant add-backs or
That's, that's what I meant, add-backs.
So then, there's no meeting tomorrow. We'll meet on Thursday at five thirty after the Finance Committee meeting. And this resolution will still be on the table. And however the council wants to go about adding add-backs and deletions will be addressed that night.
Do we need a motion to cancel tomorrow's meeting and to table the resolution? Or just take no action?
Well, I, I, I think right now it's agreeable. There's no meeting tomorrow night, so it's been canceled. And the, the resolution is still on the table.
Okay.
It'll be part, well, it'll be part of the next night's, Thursday night's meeting schedule as, as a revisit.
Okay.
As, as is.
Okay, is everyone in agreement with this? We, we're going to, we will reconvene on Thursday.
Okay.
All right, so again, thank you, everyone, for your participation this evening and your hard work, and I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All right, all in favor? All right, good night, everyone. Thank you.